Good morning. I now call the February 17th, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular item, the Board Clerk will receive, will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Superintendent Gullett?
Good morning. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Members of the Board, good to see you all again this morning. I do not have any items for the briefing, so we can proceed with the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. So, the next item on our agenda is the Quarterly Data Review. I believe, okay, Mr. Whitehouse is going to start for us. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. We appreciate you all having us here today. We're going to be sharing some updates on our quarterly data from Quarter Two from our schools. And before we get into that, what I do want to talk about, we are going to highlight a few schools this morning from each of our areas, but I want to just talk about the work that we've done for all of our schools this school year, just so you all are aware of what steps we've been taking. Yes, ma'am?
Can you pull the microphone a little bit closer to you? It is a little difficult for us up here. Thank you.
Is that better?
Try again, just a little bit.
You hear me now?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
All right. I'll try to, I'll try to project a little better, too. So, just sharing a little bit, before we get into the data, about the work that we've done collectively as a team, myself, my team, along with the area superintendents, and supporting our schools. So, one of the things that we know that we lack right now in this district is access to a data dashboard. And a data dashboard is going to provide us an opportunity to really take all these data pieces that we have and be able to put them in one place to collectively access and utilize that data for the benefit of our students. Right now, we have a wealth of data coming from a variety of sources, but it takes a lot of time for our school teams to be able to access the data, pull the data, combine reports, and really make actionable decisions off of that. So, one of the steps that we took this year in, in the interim while we were searching for a data dashboard is to work and try to provide additional supports for our schools so that they would spend less time looking for data, more time working with the data. So, my team this year, using our district portal, has created folders for each of our schools that contain access to all the data that they need to really start making effective decisions. So, within those folders, we provided not only access to previous data for their schools so they can see the historical, where their schools have been, but also progress monitoring data, where our students are currently performing and how they can help move the needle for those students. So, within the progress monitoring folders, one of the things that we did this year was put together spreadsheets for our schools of all the students on their campus, including historical assessment data for those students, demographic data for those students, and then incorporating progress monitoring data for those students all onto one spreadsheet so that they had all those data resources available to them to make actionable decisions. And with that data, we have partnered with the area superintendents to really make sure that our, our schools know how to utilize the data and are supported in the work that they're doing. And so, we have partnered with them through principal meetings to really do some collaborative data digs, accessing those folders, and really being able to drill down to the student level to make decisions about how we can best support individual students and groups of students to make sure that they're making progress this year. And we've also supported them in going out to schools and doing some individual data digs at the school sites with their school teams to, again, problem solve around, here's what the data is telling us, how do we make decisions to effectively support those students? And not only just including progress monitoring data, but also including early warning indicators, which we know are also a key data point for our students. Students that have missed school, a large numbers of school days this year, or students that have, you know, behavioral challenges this year, because we know that we can't just address the academic needs of our students, we really have to address the whole child, which includes social-emotional learning along with those academic supports. And so, we have worked collectively with all of our schools this year, elementary transformation and secondary, to make sure that they have access to the data that they need in order to make informed decisions. So, we're going to spend a little bit of time now going through some of our quarterly data, just to show you where we're at as of the end of Quarter Two, and be able to talk through district-wide and then spotlight a few of our schools as we progress. Before we really look at the data, I do want to just kind of frame the year where we're at, just so we, you know, can all view this data in the same standpoint. We know that this year, in August, first nine weeks started a little rough for us with COVID. We had large numbers of students and staff that were quarantined, not only once, but some of them multiple times, and have seen that again this third quarter. And so, while we certainly own this data and know where we are and are taking action steps to address the needs of our students and our schools, we certainly want to make sure that we are framing some of the challenges that have been outside of our control that we have had to operate in. So, what you'll see right now on the screen shows you our English Language Arts comparison last year to this year. And if you remember when I shared the first quarter, what we talked about was that we had shifted our map some for the first nine weeks this year compared to how we had traditionally outlined our curriculum maps for English Language Arts, whereas in years past, we had focused just on Cluster One, which is key ideas and details. This year, we shifted to bring in some of the standards that our students struggle with based on the data and really start with the harder standards to provide more time for instruction for those students and more opportunities for us to reteach and remediate as necessary. So, we can't simply look at this as we have in the past where we looked at average QSMA scores one year to the next. So, this year, we've broken it down for you again by the standards, so we can really look standard by standard comparison for how our students are performing, how our schools are performing. And we've provided the same data access to our schools as well so that they can really get a more detailed look at how their students are performing on the assessment. So, there's a couple of ways to look at this data, and we do want to highlight some of the strengths that we're seeing within this data. English Language Arts is definitely our, our biggest area of focus right now in terms of trying to provide additional support for our schools. But we do see some highlights and strengths within that. Our fourth grade group is certainly our group that is showing the strongest gains within those three grade levels at elementary. And you can look at this in two ways. So, one, I'll just highlight in on RL 2.4 there for you. If you look at fourth grade, we saw an improvement last year on that standard. Forty-two percent of our students last year mastered that standard. This year, same time, sixty-seven percent have mastered that standard. So, we see some growth year over year, but those are also different cohorts of students. So, you can also look at how our students performed last year as third graders on that same standard versus how they performed this year as fourth graders. So, last year, that same cohort of students when they're in third grade, sixty-six percent mastered that standard. This year, with a more complex standard, sixty-seven percent of those students mastered it. So, there's two ways that you can, as you're going through this data, look at how our students are performing year over year. Our third grade group, keep in mind, this was the group that was in first grade when the COVID shutdown happened at the fourth quarter, which is a very formative time in our students' early careers in education and learning how to read before they can read, read to learn. And so, we certainly had some gaps in there that we have been working to fill over time for those students. And the fifth grade group, we've said this before, but keep in mind, this was the group that was in third grade when the COVID shutdown happened and we had no assessment scores. So, many students that would have been retained that year were not because we had no assessment scores, and parents were allowed to decide whether their child would be retained or not at the end of that year. And so, we certainly see some challenges in our data that are a result of those challenges with COVID shutdown that year, and of course, online learning last year that presented enough challenges as well. The next slide on here you'll see is our math data. We are seeing some overall improvement in math, which is good. I think what we find is that skill gaps are a little bit easier to close in math than they are in reading because a lot of it's procedural knowledge that we're able to address as we move through a little bit quicker than we are with closing in gaps with students in reading instruction. Again, you'll see, you can look at this year to year and see some of the strengths and some of the places that we've improved, or you can certainly look cohort by cohort and look at how students have performed over time as a cohort as well. The next slide on here you'll see is our science Quarter Two QSMA results. Again, we do provide the QSMA to all of our students, grades three, four, and five. However, only the fifth graders take the state assessment this year, so that's the group, obviously, we focus the most on, in making sure that we are providing added support. And we are seeing improved results overall with our students in science, especially in fifth grade, and you'll see in a moment when we switch to the next slide where, how much of that growth we are seeing in science. So, certainly a positive trend, and we see that actually in science K-12, and I think a lot of that probably is due to the fact that we have students back in person, and we've been able to do a lot more hands-on learning in science that we weren't able to do in a virtual setting last year, which has provided us greater access to, to high-quality instruction there. So, this next slide then shows you what, more typically what you're used to seeing. So, it shows you the average QSMA score last year compared to this year. Again, not exactly apples to apples, so we don't want to belabor those too much, but you can certainly see how our students have performed last year's QSMA versus this year. But more importantly, what we hone in on, the next two columns there show us, again, the percent of our students that are meeting that target average. And if you remember me talking about this the last quarter, as we have analyzed QSMA data over time, what we've been able to do is compare how students perform on the QSMA versus how they then perform on the state assessment, the FSA assessment, to really isolate what that sweet spot is. Where is that, where is that score that the students who score here on the QSMA most often are going to end up scoring proficient? And so, we set that as a target average for our schools that we want to get our students at least there. That's the, that's the minimum threshold, right? We want all of our students to be proficient, certainly want them all to be beyond proficient, but that is our minimum threshold that we set. So, you'll see last year, the percent of our students at each grade level that were already at that target average versus this year, the percent of those students that are already at that target average as well. And I'll draw your attention down to the bottom to science where you can see last year, forty-three percent of our students were scoring at a sixty-four or better on the QSMA average. This year, we have forty-nine percent of our students scoring. So, we're, again, that is a really good strength for us right now in terms of our data performance. All right. And then this last slide, we have included into this quarter our iReady data, which is our other progress monitoring data point that we utilize in the district besides QSMAs. So, iReady provides benchmark assessments for our students in the fall, and then again in the winter, and then we do it again in the spring to really track the growth of our students. And from those benchmark assessments, they then set trajectories for each of those students for individual work and support on iReady as they do their daily practice in iReady. And so, what you'll see on this report, again, just make sure everybody is familiar with looking at these, you'll see AP1, which was our fall benchmark, that was the beginning of the year assessment that our students took. And the students that are, the, the green bar that you see on there is the percent of our students that were performing on grade level at that point in the year. So, the beginning of the year, AP1, fall, the very beginning, we had that percent at each grade level in reading or in math, performing on grade level. If the percent that's in yellow are students that are performing one grade behind, and then students that are in red perform two grades behind, which is why we don't see red in kindergarten, as there's not two grades behind in kindergarten. So, ideally, what you want to see is we look at this data. When you compare AP1 at the beginning of the year to AP2, which we just completed at the end of January, we want to see that red bar getting smaller, meaning that fewer of our students are that far behind as we close those gaps, and certainly more of our students scoring in that green area, meaning that they're on grade level. So, when we see those shifts, that certainly indicates a positive trend in that direction, although, of course, ideally, we want to eliminate all of those red bars completely. But you'll see, again, district-wide what our trends are, grade level by grade level. And I think you'll see, again, illustrated on this, our fourth grade group is that group that really is performing strongly in comparison to the other grade levels as we look at the data.
Mr. Whitehouse, if I may ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that fifth grade, we, we talk about that quite a bit, and I have a fifth grader, so I understand that they are that group that didn't get tested on FSA. Have we aggregated the data to show what their QSMAs looked like in, in third grade, and then in comparison to the growth that potentially those students, looking at third, I'm, I know that we've looked at their cohort, obviously. I, I don't know completely what I'm asking, but I'm just curious if we were able to pull out those that we anticipate potentially based on their QSMA data would not have been advanced to fourth grade? If, if that segment out of the data is what keeps this green bar so close to not moving? And same thing with the red bar. I mean, they, they're certainly making gains, and that's good to see, AP1 over AP2, and, but we do know that we have group, a group of students in that cohort that potentially shouldn't have been there.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So, actually, what we do in third grade, we monitor the progress for our third graders long before the FSA, and we start making interventions and decisions about students that we think are, are in that danger zone of potentially being retained at the end of the year. So, we actually start in the second quarter, once we have our first QSMA data, identifying those students that are not scoring at that cut level that we know gets them at least to a Level Two on the FSA. Anybody that falls below that, we start automatically building in strategies for support, interventions, and collecting progress monitoring data standard by standard on those students to build a portfolio. Because that's one of the additional ways that we can progress students out of third grade beyond simply having the Level Two or better on the FSA, is we can actually have a portfolio of evidence that says we, we, we can demonstrate they've made that growth. So, yes, we had that group of students identified in third grade that we were concerned about, that we had started portfolio process on, and were collecting data and providing additional remediation and support. So, we had a pretty good indicator and probably could have made even without FSA a decision on which students could progress or not. But if you remember, the governor's order at the end of that year was really to allow the parents to move their child on if they felt they needed to move on, and of course, the vast majority of them wanted their child to move on without that assist, that extra data at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Does that fully answer the question?
I believe so, yeah.
Mr. Whitehouse, I think they're also, just because I'm seeing it from this angle, and when they're seeing the green and red, I think there might be a little bit of confusion from the iReady and the QSMA, because you were looking at colors for the QSMA, and this is iReady.
iReady.
Maybe if you could just take a minute and explain just the difference between those two, just so they have a better...
Yeah, sure, certainly. So, iReady really is, when we do these AP assessments, it's really assessing all standards for that grade level, right? It's a pure benchmark. So, it's really looking at how they perform across the board as a grade level, whereas when we do QSMA, we really isolate specific standards based on what we've taught in the curriculum map that year, right? So, we're, it's very targeted to what's been taught, whereas iReady will certainly capture some of the remediation we've done during that time period, but maybe not necessarily assessed on every standard that our students have learned. So, there are plenty of standards. We're only in February. There's plenty of standards that we still have yet to teach in March and in April before those students get to the FSA at the end of the year because we can't teach everything in half a year. That's why we, we're giving that four years. So, what, what they assess is a little bit different, but certainly, we know how to track progress in both of those. So, our students have had a full half semester or a full half year of, of learning, so we should see some gains and growth out of those and see those bars starting to move and close.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Whitehouse.
Hi.
Yes, as far as iReady is concerned, would you also elaborate on the year-end view? What, what view we're looking at?
Yeah, correct. So, this is a year-end view that we, we show with iReady. There's two different ways you can look at iReady. One is the current view, which shows you right now where those students are at based on the time of year. So, the year-end view actually says if these students were to take the FSA right now, how we assume they would perform, but not taking into effect all the learning that'll take place between when this assessment is given and when the state assessment is given at the end of the year. What the standard view does is shows where they are at this snapshot in time. So, these are the students that we think if they were to learn what we expect they learn between now and the state assessment, would actually end up being proficient. So, the standard view gives you a little more green and a little less red because it's predicting what students are going to learn, whereas the end-of-view view gives you a little bit more, I don't want to say negative view, but it gives you a little bit more abrupt picture of if we stop the year right now and assess our students at the end of the year, this is what we expect to see.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Would you, would you go back to Slide One, just so we can, I can get started. I, I thought, I thought perhaps we were going to wait to the end for, for, we didn't want to interrupt you, but go to Slide One and, and look at this from a, a child bringing home a report card. Help me understand the, the plan or how you see where we're overperforming and how you see where we're under, just in a general sense, how we're targeting that, to kind of reduce the heartburn a little bit.
Yeah, certainly. And, and certainly, heartburn is understandable. We, you know, we, we really want to make sure that we don't just look at this in a holistic view, which this gives you more of a fifty-foot view instead of a one-foot view. We really start drilling down to the student level, because this would not be a report card. This is showing you the whole district together, every student combined together, where our students are in terms of mastering standards. So, it gives us that larger view as a district to help us kind of figure out where some of those standards, grade levels, or subjects of concern might be so that we can start working on support. But when we work with individual schools, we get down to the student level and really figure out where is Johnny at, and how can we provide a personalized approach to Johnny to help them improve? So, if you're looking at this from a holistic view, English Language Arts is our subject that we know is our biggest concern right now. We're not seeing as great a performance as we want out of English Language Arts, but again, when we talk about the holes that have been created because of COVID over the last two years with these students, it's a more difficult subject for us to be able to close those gaps. But, that being said, you can look standard by standard, and we can really isolate out where we're seeing some success because we are. And I pointed out a few of those there for you, where if you look year to year, we're seeing a lot of gain in fourth grade, or even looking at the cohort, how they performed last year on that standard versus this year, we can identify pockets of success. I mean, we know success is happening. We're seeing success, just not overall success in terms of moving the needle totally where we want to go, but it helps us as a team and the schools as a team to really be able to focus in better and say, where can I help my child be the most successful? This child, that child, every child, make sure that we have a plan of action for them.
And in this view, if you would, just to, just to address where, where you can make a statement that we're going toward our goal, which is the top ten percent in the state, and, you know, get out of our current situation in the bottom area. Could you just address it from that angle? Like, how does it make you feel? Are you hopeful in, in terms of looking at the data?
So, that's really a two-part question. The, the first part of moving the top ten percent is a little bit hard to tell because I can't see how all the other districts are performing. And what we saw last year with our end-of-year assessment results was that even though our scores did not hit where we wanted to as a result of everything that happened last year, neither did any other district in the state. And so, actually, our district standing improved last year even though our scores declined because we didn't decline as much as some other districts. So, it's really a two-pronged question there. I can't predict that first part. What I can tell you from what we're seeing in the data is that we're seeing stronger gains in math, we're seeing stronger gains in science, we're feeling pretty good about the gains we're seeing in fourth grade in ELA, but we know we certainly have some areas that we need to work on, and we certainly have some areas of concern with fifth grade and English Language Arts, and then just individual pockets. Not every school is the same. Not every school has the same struggle with the same subjects or grade levels, so we really start digging into school by school where we need to provide that support.
And reading, if you could just, I, just address, address that for a moment, just from your point of view.
So, with reading, what, again, what I see at this moment, again, we're only halfway through the year, so we haven't taught all the standards, nor have we finished our time to be able to remediate and close some of those gaps. Again, I think we're going to see stronger performance in fourth grade, and we are probably not going to see as good a performance as we want out of fifth grade, but we knew that walking in the door this year, that we had a lot of ground to make up with that fifth grade group. And while we are seeing some improvement and closing some gaps, we know we still have a lot of work left to do with that.
Thank you. And what I'm really looking for is, is how we can help as a board, how we can help achieve the goals that you're searching for. Thank you.
Yeah, so, good question. And I think, you know, a lot of that just comes from your support in some of the things that we're going to be asking as we proceed, and making sure that we have the right materials and resources in the hands of our schools and our school leaders to make good decisions and to be able to provide the right support for individual students. And I think that's a big part of it. You know, we do a lot of the day-to-day lift with our schools in supporting what they're doing in the classroom, and supporting how they analyze data and how they create those plans of action to support individual students. But certainly, you all help us provide what we need to get in the hands of those teachers and those schools to be successful.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, now we're going to spotlight a few of our schools to share what we're seeing in some of those schools and also what we're doing to provide additional support as we move into the final stretch of the school year. So, we're going to start off with our elementary schools and Dr. Hembrook.
Good morning and thank you. So, we'll, we're going to go ahead and start with Bellevue-Santos Elementary. So, when we look at this iReady data for Bellevue-Santos Elementary, we can see when we're looking at the red that we are decreasing the number of students that are two or more grade levels below in reading and math, but it's not at the rate of increase that we would really like to see. And so, one of the things that Bellevue-Santos Elementary is doing is they're focusing now, when they have iReady data chats, about the percentage of lessons passed for students rather than only focusing on minutes. When we also look at the QSMA data, we see that the percentage of students meeting the ELA QSMA target average is reduced compared to last year. So, that tells us that at Bellevue-Santos Elementary, we need to continue to focus on English Language Arts. And so, two things that we've done differently at Bellevue-Santos Elementary is that we've restructured the Tier One ELA blocks, and the restructuring has allowed us to push in our support facilitators into the ELA classrooms during Tier One so that they can help and support all students during Tier One instruction. And additionally, another strategy that we're implementing is that the instructional coaches are pulling student groups and then providing reteach opportunities based on this QSMA data three times a week. The, the rest of the QSMA data does tell us some, some things to celebrate or some highlights for us. So, there are gains being made in science and math. So, for example, the math QSMA average this year for grades three, four, and five surpassed last year's QSMA average at this school. The fifth grade science QSMA average for this school was also higher compared to last year, and additionally, the school has nearly doubled the percentage of students meeting the QSMA target average in fifth grade science this year compared to last year. So, let's take a look at Legacy Elementary. Again, the iReady data demonstrates that Legacy is, is actually increasing the percent of students on grade level in reading and math for kindergarten and first grade, but then the data also demonstrates in iReady that there definitely needs to be still a focus for third and fifth grade in ELA, which also will mirror the QSMA data. So, let's take a look at that. What we see in the QSMA data for Legacy is the fourth grade QSMA average score for ELA was higher than fourth grade this year compared to last year, so that's a little celebration. But when we look at the percent of students meeting the target average for grades three and five, we know that ELA still needs to be improved and a focus area. So, ELA continues to be a focus at Legacy. Based on this data, specific interventions are now in place to provide targeted... Based on this data, specific interventions are now in place to provide targeted supports to these students based on the standards. These interventions and supports are being implemented in the classroom as well as outside the classroom with a reading intervention teacher that was hired in December to help support this work. There's also bi-weekly progress monitoring checks in place for students so that we're monitoring how students are responding to this additional instruction. The QSMA data also demonstrates that fourth-grade ELA has seen some gains in, actually both in ELA and math for fourth graders. The percent of students meeting the QSMA target average in math has increased from last year to this year. And also, the percentage of fifth-grade students meeting the QSMA target average in science increased by six percentage points from last year. And finally, we'll wrap up with Marion Oaks Elementary for the elementary schools. So the iReady data demonstrates that at Marion Oaks, we are moving students to be on grade level in reading and math, but we want to also focus on decreasing the percent of students that are two or more grade levels below. That's that, that part in red there for you. So this is definitely an area that we want to focus on. The average QSMA score for ELA is near last year's score at Marion Oaks, but ELA still continues to be a focus. And so our goal is to increase the percentage of students that are going to meet the target average in ELA. An intervention teacher has been hired at Marion Oaks Elementary School, and this intervention teacher is targeting specific groups of students that, based on the QSMA and iReady data. So the intervention teacher and the coaches are reteaching small group settings of students. And so this is in addition to what they would receive from their classroom teacher. So we're providing them some extra small group instruction additionally based on standards. During these small group opportunities, we are presenting the students with standards-based lessons at their grade level because we know that we need to get them more exposure to on-grade-level text and practice with the standards. Marion Oaks has also adjusted MTSS interventions for students as appropriate based on the data. So again, really trying to expose students to more of that grade-level standards is what that, what, that's what they'll see on the, the final state assessment. Some other things to point out for the QSMA data at Marion Oaks is the QSMA data indicate that there are areas of growth. For example, in science, the percent of students meeting the QSMA target average has increased by 13 percentage points compared to last year. And the average QSMA score has increased compared to last year in fifth-grade science, fourth-grade ELA, third-grade math, and fourth-grade math. And so now we'll turn it over to Ms. Kiner, and she'll share with you some specifics about some of the transformation schools.
When reviewing the data, whoops, hold on one second. When reviewing the data for East Marion Elementary School, the data is certainly showing us that students are working hard to close the gap as evidenced by their iReady AP Diagnostic Data. However, not as quickly as we would like for them to. One of the strategies that we have implemented in place at East Marion with our students there in grades three through five is the instructional learning paths have been adjusted in iReady based on their data to be able to provide more grade-level practice on individual standards for our students. When looking at the QSMA results from quarter two, third, fourth, and fifth-grade ELA continues to be a focus area for us at East Marion as the percent of students meeting the target average in grades three, four, and five have been reduced when you compare to last year's data. The school is addressing this focus area during quarter three by continuing to deliver that strong tier-one standard-based instruction in ELA. In addition, also reteaching our quarter one and quarter-two standards that students did not master. Students have been identified in, are in targeted intervention groups, and they are working on prescriptive lessons that have been put out by our Transformation Department so that we can reteach those quarter one and quarter-two standards in ELA. In addition, both of their coaches do have specific time in their day that they push into specific classroom, especially in our fourth and fifth grades, during the ELA block for additional support for our students. The extra hour of reading instruction at East Marion is being utilized to provide a double dose of teaching the standards in ELA to our students in grades three, four, and five. Fourth and fifth-grade math also continues to be a strong focus area for East Marion as, again, the percent of students that were meeting the target average has been reduced when compared to last year. The school is addressing this focus area by the fact that they're leveraging their math coach as well as their math intervention teacher that we made sure that East Marion had in order to support teachers as well as the students. They are pulling out, again, the identified students in math to work on specific standards with a focus on depth of knowledge one and two standards. In addition, the homeschool liaison and the guidance department are working collaboratively to support the school-wide attendance plan there in order to increase exposure to our content-specific instruction for our students. East Marion also has a school-wide after-school tutoring program that has been up and running since earlier in the year, four days a week, in order to meet individualized students' academic needs and extend their day even beyond the additional hour that they already have at East Marion. On a positive note, the fifth-grade cohort increased their average at East Marion on the ELA QSMA from last year, as well as increased their average by four percentage points on the science QSMA from last year, and that was the cohort of the fifth graders. When reviewing, we'll move on to Emerald Shores. When reviewing the data from Emerald Shores Elementary...
Just kind of hold on.
Yes.
Would you flip back to that? And just to address, like, fourth, let's see, fourth grade, we're, we're over, over 50% on the target. How did, what did we do, if you could generalize, what did we do to have that be one of the highest? Like, could, could you dissect a success where, where we're moving in the, in the positive direction or say, number, the 64% stands out, those, a success? What, what specifically are we nailing? In a general sense, what are we, what are we nailing to, to have our successes?
Right. So I think what you're asking and looking at is the column to the far right when you're looking at that ELA QSMA fifth-grade target average. That 64% is the target average that we want after all three QSMA's have been taken. The third one they'll take in a couple of weeks before spring break. That's the average that we're striving to achieve at East Marion. We're not quite there yet, but that's the overall average that would show that if a student is, has an average of a 64 on their three QSMA's, then most likely, they would be projected to earn a Level III at the end of the year on their state assessment. That's the target average. I think that's what you're asking me to address.
How did we, how did we get to it? I guess is what I'm asking. You picked the success, and then tell me how we, how, in your judgment, how we got there? What, what did we do in that particular grade? And farther down, because we're, it, it's like compound interest.
Right.
If, if we're not doing well, if we're doing well, it really compounds as we, as we get into the higher grades.
Yes, sir. So I think one of the things that we have done in the past that have had great success in Marion County, as well as what we're continuing to do right now, to close that gap for our students, is really, at this time of the year, you know, we've, we've worked with coaching our teachers all the way up until this point, and now we are using our coaches, we're using our, in some schools, administrators, we're using our intervention teachers, which is where we've poured in some extra support. Our district program specialists are pushing into our transformation schools and some of our other targeted schools because we're really wanting to make sure that we have the most, the, the experts, right, in front of our students, delivering that content-based tier-one instruction as well as giving them that extra double dose of instruction. So just really giving them that explicit instruction in the area of reading and then, of course, math where there might be some deficits to help close that gap. So we are, that is exactly what you're talking about. That is what we have happening at, at these schools that we're talking about today.
Thank you.
Ms. Kiner, you mentioned, what caught my attention was the extended hour for the students. Was that third through fifth grade or what, or the grade levels that are receiving that?
The double dose. So the third through fifth grade are receiving the double dose. Because we have the luxury of having the extra hour at the transformation schools, we have revamped the extra hour. We still have the interventions that they're in, but in addition, they have the double dose where they're reteaching the standards from quarter one and quarter two.
Okay, so they're all attending, because it, it made it sound like they could stay after school, and I was kind of curious if they had the transportation to stay after school? And then I was also curious about the numbers, like, how many students are actually utilizing that program, if that makes sense?
So we have all students receiving the double dose in grades three through five. And in addition, we have four days a week tutoring, which is beyond the day.
Okay.
And we actually have over 85 students attending there. Our teachers are committed at East Marion. They've always had a strong after-school tutoring program, and the, the parents there are, have been fabulous about it this year.
Okay, so the parents...
We've stayed strong. Sometimes you start off strong and it kind of dwindles. Our numbers have stayed steady out there for that after-school.
They're staying in there. Okay, thank you. I just needed clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Good morning, Ms. Kiner. Speaking about the, the double dose, is it a second dose of the same reading curriculum?
So it's not. We're actually using an iReady curriculum in order to be able to do that. We've added, we've taken kind of the packaged iReady curriculum, but we've also added questions and we've added assessments to it as well. That way, they can do some formative progress monitoring checks along the way, ensuring that students are mastering the standards for the second time in that double-dose session before moving on.
Okay. So it's all aligned to the, the standards that they're going to be expected to pass?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yes. It's, honestly, it's one of the strategies that we implemented last year at Evergreen and Oak Crest that we saw great success with. So when you see great success, you repeat great success.
So is the iReady the prescriptive, the prescriptive lesson plans? Is it the iReady that you were, what you meant when you said that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. So we'll move on to Emerald Shores. When reviewing the data for Emerald Shores Elementary, the data does show us that students in kindergarten and first grade, as well as third and fourth-grade levels, are continuing to close the gap as evidenced by the iReady AP Diagnostic Data. However, it also shows that second and fifth grades are making slower progress in an effort for all, for, to expose all students to those grade-level standards-based practice. The instructional learning paths, again, at Emerald Shores for those students have also been adjusted in iReady. That's taking an individual look by student to see what learning path they're on in iReady and adjusting that level of instruction so that they're exposed to those standards that they will see at the end of the year on the state test. In addition, third, fourth, and fifth-grade ELA is a focus area for the school at Emerald Shores Elementary as the percent of students meeting the target average has been reduced in all three grades according to last year's data. The school is addressing this focus area as they continue to focus on ELA standards in quarter three and reteaching the standards the students struggled with, again, by providing that double dose of quarter one and two standards in ELA. The reading coach at Emerald Shores, as well as a district program specialist, pulls small groups of students to work on identified standards and are providing that targeted instruction to the students that need that explicit instruction repeated. Teachers are using, again, the prescriptive lessons with individual students to increase ELA skill knowledge at Emerald Shores. In addition, common assessments continue to be a focus in grades K through five as they continue to review that common assessment data, those formative assessments where they're monitoring the progress with a focus on proficiency during collaboration. The tutoring practice that we have at Emerald Shores is a, academic tutoring on Saturdays that has been implemented since the fall, and ELA writing and math are all skills that are reinforced for all students that are in our programs on Saturdays at Emerald Shores. They as well have had a strong support. Anywhere from 60 to over 100 students are there on the identified Saturdays at Emerald Shores reviewing standards.
Hold on, Ms. Kiner. Vice Chair.
Would you mind going back to the previous slide? Because I think that it is so telling...
Yes, ma'am.
...of what we're, we're working on here. While we don't see as much green as we want to see, looking in specifically in those non-QSMA subject areas, kindergarten first and second, these are the students as they come to us. If you look at both kindergarten AP1, Language Arts as well as, or reading as well as math, we had no students testing on grade level for kindergarten when they first were tested, none.
Right.
And in reading and math. Then you go to first grade, we had 1% of our students testing on grade level in math. 1%. I, I mean, I, I think that while certainly, we're making those gains and we can, but this is kind of prescriptive and a precursor to what we're working so diligently to get these kids moving forward and in this green and, and moving them along, but by the time they get to third grade, we've done a lot of work certainly to get them there, but looking at where they've started, there has to be a greater conversation around that at, at some point, and I know that's part of our early learning conversation and the VPK programs and, and all of that. But this is very telling data right here that I think our community needs to be aware of, that we have zero percentage of kindergartners entering one of our schools. And this isn't just subject to this one school, that we have this in other schools as well, but 0% of those kindergartners at grade level when they first come to us. And so that, it, it's a very telling picture, and, and so thank you for sharing this data. And again, this is not just this one school. We know that this happens all the time.
Yes, and to Board Member Browning's point earlier, when he asked what the board can do to help this issue, it's a community issue. It's not, to your point, Board Member Campbell, it's not a one-school issue. It is a community issue, and that is something that the team, we've been working with Dr. Gullett and we've been working with Ms. Talbot Irving on, really, we have to address VPK through second grade, right? We know that's where they're, they're receiving the foundational skills, and with the district strategic plan in place, we'll be able to do that, and we're already working on doing that. Having VPKs in every school, having more students come in earlier are certainly some of the things that we have already happening.
Thank you.
Great point.
Ms. Thor.
Thank you, Ms. Kiner. And in terms of the question, what can we do further as, as a school board? Overall, are the schools feeling like they're getting the, the resources that they need that we're capable of approving and, and therefore supplying? Because if they're not, then, then we need to know about that.
Right. I do feel like they are because they are usually very comfortable in letting us know that, and so we advocate for them as well. And so we are, we know that that's where we need our resources in front of our students. And so we make it a priority to do that.
That's great. And then in terms of the, the community issue that Vice Chair Campbell was speaking of and, and what can we do, and what can we continue to do as a district? Because obviously, there is a lot being done. But it's a full court, full-court press situation at, at this point, and I'm quite certain that we're not alone in this compared to other districts. And I care but don't care about that. Overall, we want every kid across the country to do well, but our focus for the, for this conversation is here. So again, I am very, very focused on whatever you guys need is, is what we want to be able to, to give you. And I thank you, Dr. Gullett, for creating the Community Engagement, Director of Community Engagement position because those are the kinds of key positions that connect us to the community and, and hopefully, every single one of us sitting here is doing all we can to be in the community and, and help the community understand that this is not a finger-pointing thing, this is just a real situation. You know, this is where we are. So what can we do, you know, collectively, individually and collectively, to move this needle? So, so that's the only reason why I'm asking these questions because as a school board member, I certainly don't want to leave any resource off the table. And when it comes to contracting and, and getting you guys the resources you need quickly and still staying within what, we know the millions of details we have to, to cover, getting that done, you know, being responsive. The good news is, is that Omicron seems to be abating, and so hopefully, we'll be positioned to finish really strong instead of getting taken out, you know, two feet from the goal line. That's my prayer anyway.
That would be wonderful. We are certainly starting to see... We are certainly starting to see classrooms that are full again, which we told the Department of Health that yesterday on the call, which is wonderful to see our students back en masse's in our classrooms. Thank you for the comment.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Flip back to that last slide if you would. Thank you. And and before I get to my my question, well, I can do reading here. Go to that fourth grade reading. And we've been, we made progress. And then we go to the fifth grade. And help me understand, help me understand how we made progress and then how we lost progress. What's what's your assessment of that?
So, I, good question. I do think that to Board Member Campbell's point earlier, when she called out the fifth-grade group, so to speak, that is the group of students that were in third grade from fourth quarter when we first started the pandemic and we had the shutdown. And so, while Mr. Whitehouse described the portfolio process that we have in place for our third graders, and we certainly had that in place. So, we already had identified our students that we had been working with in third grade, which are now our fifth graders all year long, two years ago, on repeated skills and reteaching and being very prescriptive with them. However, when we, when the pandemic happened, part of that governor's order did state that parents did have the opportunity to not have their students retained as what we normally would do in third grade. And most of our students were promoted to fourth grade last year, and now they're fifth graders. Some of those current fifth graders also participated online last year. And our teachers did an amazing job teaching online. But it, we ran a pandemic. Our teachers were doing the best they could, and our students were doing the best they could. And so, that fifth-grade group has students in it that very, very likely, definitely would have probably had another year in third grade had we not been in a pandemic. So, they're still trying to play catch-up, which is why we're being very strategic with working with our fifth graders this year.
All right, that's encouraging that the students made progress during that time because it was certainly a difficult time. But we did take, I hear you saying we did take a serious hit, the students did during that time, even with even with the progress that they made. Then going back to this, Ms. Campbell's idea on the pre-K, help help me understand. Maybe I'm a little old school, but help me understand what these kindergarten grade level. I mean, we used to hit, we used to hit kindergarten, we had, I guess you'd call it pre-K because, you know, we'd be doing books at home and what have you. We'd be learning and learning how to read and what have you. But what what is that? Hitting it on level as as they arrive? Because it seems to take a focus off our responsibility and puts it on the community. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to, to the greatest of my ability to keep the focus on the district, not on the community. Because I love the community and I think that we live in a very prosperous area, very prosperous county, very, very conservative, strong substantial compared to other districts around the state district. We've, we've got a huge amount of of wonderful things happening here in Marion County. But help me understand that that hitting the hitting the road, because if we always, if we always say it's not our fault because it's the community's fault, you know, I I I don't see us picking up the load that we need to pick up as a district.
Okay, that's a great point. Well, I would say that all means all, and our students, when they walk in our doors, are ours as well as their parents, right? We're an extension of the family. And it is our responsibility to meet the needs of our learners where they're at. And they all come in at different levels when they come into us. Some of them, some of them, you know, have been in, they haven't had preschool settings, but they've been in church settings where they've been in Sunday school. They've been with their parents in the grocery stores. And their parents are asking them about the fruit and the vegetables as they're going to the the fruit and vegetable stand. And they're asking them the colors. And some are, parents are doing the best they can. They're working, they're working night shifts. So, we have students that come into us in a variety of ways. That's what makes education so amazing because we get to, we have the opportunity to work with all types of learners. So, my point earlier was just saying that certainly, we've put a VPK, the voluntary pre-K program, at every school campus. So, we do have the opportunity for parents, if they so choose, they're able to have their students come into our public school setting a year earlier to begin to start those foundational skills that we just can be more strategic about in the education setting. We know parents are reading with their children at home and working with them. But when we receive them, we're able to do that in a little bit more structured, systematic way to help close the gap so that there's not a gap as they're moving up through the different grade levels.
Ms. Kindred.
Not sure if that answers exactly what you were asking.
Ms. Kindred, let me ask a question as well.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, guys, for this information that you've given us. I'm also looking at this Emerald Shores data as well as the kindergarten and the grade one and seeing where these kids are coming into the school system, not at grade level or at any level. Basically, they're they're behind. My question is, do we have communications with the daycares and the preschools about certain things that we need these kids to have been exposed to prior, that could help them when they get to kindergarten to move a little bit more efficiently through the system? Because when I look at this, that this data here, these are the kids that were two, three, three years old. And they were at the start of the pandemic, so it's kindergarten, the first grade. So, they were, they were in the midst of whatever was going on in the community. But they may not have gone to preschools or traditional daycares as they would have if if the pandemic had not hit. So, I'm concerned, are we, do we communicate with those preschools and daycares? Do we say, these are some standards that we need you guys to hit? I know when I, my kids were young, they had to know their numbers, they had to know their colors, they had to know certain things before, especially if they were going to go to a magnet school because they had to test into those schools at that time. So, let me ask that question.
Yes, that's a great question, Reverend Cummings. I will say with Dr. Gullett spearheading this, we have forged a strong partnership with the Early Learning Coalition that Dr. Hembrook and Jennifer Beck, our Director of Elementary Ed, meet with frequently. The Director of the Early Learning Coalition. And they have forged the partnership to where they are having those conversations and they're meeting on a regular basis to make sure that the Early Learning Coalition has the capacity and they're able to go out into the preschools that are the private sector so that we are all on the same common ground. But they have forged that relationship and that partnership. So, there's meetings that happen often with the Early Learning Coalition.
So, how involved is, when I'm thinking, Ms. Thrower and I were at North Marion a few weeks ago, and we were talking to the hippie. How how involved does is the hippie program in that getting these, some of these resources to these kids at a very, very early age?
Yes, so our hippie program falls under our federal programs umbrella. And I had actually the privilege of seeing them in action quite often. Last year, they were housed at Evergreen Elementary. And so, I I spent a lot of time at Evergreen Elementary in the past. And so, I would see the parents, and again, these are parents of students, of children that are two and three years old and four years old. And they would come and the hippie program support facilitators are able to bring the parents in. They can even go into the homes and provide that early learning support where they teach parents a specific strategy. They give them books. I have seen them come through, I know during the pandemic, they come would come through a specific car line and they would give them the literature books, they would give them the strategies. But certainly, they are very hands-on with them. So, that's, that's all part of that umbrella of the Early Learning Coalition and the hippie program that we're able to provide that support. So, there is support out there for our parents of those early learners. Even if they're not coming into VPK because they're not four yet, we have supports out there that we can bring to them. One phone call away.
Thank you. I'm just thinking, maybe we need to push it-
Yes.
-a whole lot more. The board, I've heard the board members say, what can we do to support it? I'm thinking that's one thing that we need to be pushing, the hippie and all those other programs, to get that stuff out there earlier-
Yes.
-as a board, we pushing it.
And maybe even have them, again, at the parent partnership Saturdays. I know Dr. Reese and her group were there at North Marion a couple of weekends ago. I know we have one coming up at Vanguard at the end of the month. But that's certainly something that we could easily do.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
I I I want to go back to kind of the way Mr. Browning was was phrasing, I think, his question to you and see if I can ask it a little bit differently. Just to educate us, if you do have a student coming in from a kindergarten perspective and we're giving them an assessment, their very first test they've ever taken in school, which is essentially what AP1 is doing in I-Ready, potentially, what would that be asking of that child? What would we be wanting to ensure that that kindergartner knew when they came, that would put them on some level? Is it that they can identify their numbers or that they actually know what those numbers have placed value? And or or is it, are they, are they just knowing how to sound out their letters? Or they're actually putting syllables together and starting to form words? Like what, do they know their colors? Like what is it specifically that we're asking of them? Because I think that would help Mr. Browning and and all of us to understand then, if we have students coming into us that don't know these skills, then they're not getting them before they get to us, whether they're in a VPK or in a daycare or at home. Frankly, they're not receiving what those things are. And I think that's also to Reverend Cummings' point, that what then can we do to say, hey, community, help us? These are what these kids need to know by this age. Touch every one of these kids at age two, three, four. These are the, every time you see a child, you know, certainly don't touch them physically. But if you see them in the grocery store, say, hi, do you know what color this is? I mean, seriously, what what is it that we can help encourage other people who have contact with our young learners to be prepared once they come to our classes?
Right, that's a great question. And honestly, it's, quite frankly, it would be for parents to just encourage and read to their early learners, their children. If they're reading to them, the students are exposed to those words, they're exposed to the print, they're exposed to the cover of the book, which way, the direction the print is is on the page, talking to them when they're in the grocery store and giving them those experiences that are places that we're going anyways, not asking anyone to take any kind of faraway field trip, but just giving them the exposure, speaking to them in complete sentences, allowing them, their children, the time to talk and have that conversation about a certain topic. Sure, letter identification, letter sounds, I mean, that's extra if they're doing that, but that's not even really necessary. If they're reading to their children and they're talking to them, they're gaining that vocabulary and they're gaining, they're gaining the knowledge, the prereq knowledge that we need once we get them to that VPK or kindergarten even level.
So, understanding based on that information, we have potentially these kindergartners in this particular school, again, looking at a snapshot in time, but we're looking at it here. Those kindergartners potentially were not ever exposed to a book, potentially, not exposed to actually understanding that a book opens this way and you read left to right, not not understanding what words really look like in the context of a book, literature, et cetera. So, those are the kinds of things. And and from a math perspective too, maybe not knowing what one means or two means or those kinds. Just so we have a clearer understanding of what in fact we're talking about when we're saying an early learning academy or a VPK or something that, right now, we have learners in our community that are coming to us without that foundational knowledge that even gets them on a level to start advancing their academic career. And so, that, I believe, in my opinion, is why this board has been talking about expanding VPK and talking about expanding early learning. And because while I understand we are here for K-12 and the twenty, on up to twenty-two for those ESE students, and I understand that that VPK isn't a part of necessarily our wheelhouse, we understand that those students coming to us prior to kindergarten and the exposure they have to any form of learning impacts what they do from kindergarten on. And so, if we're not a part of that conversation and ensuring that those students are prepared, then we're going to continue to see how long it takes us to not only get students on grade level, but to get them caught up to even expand beyond that grade level and and why sometimes those grade-level changes and shifts take so much longer. Because we also know the research in early learning, is that birth to five, is that, you know, birth to three, birth to four? You get exposure in that timeframe, you're set for life. I I mean, really, if you get some of that exposure, you are on a pathway to success. But we can see just by this data right here that we have a significant number of students that aren't getting that. So, that was kind of just commentary, not necessarily a question. I just, I I wanted to ask that to help us understand. Because I know that at times, we've talked about early learning, and I know that's going to be something we'll be talking about again. But just to get us all on that same level playing field of understanding, we have students coming to us that don't even know what a book looks like and don't know how to open a book or and and how that can impact learning from that point on.
That's absolutely correct. Thank you.
Ms. Browning?
Yes, thank you. And and to that point, I, boy, I think we're we're really touching on it here. So, to that point of youngsters coming in and the community producing those, and our families and parents producing those, those students that come to us, do we have, I'm I'm a big reality person, do we have somebody, and I'm just going to make this up, somebody that's got a PhD in, in coping with the reality of your community? Let's just say that our community is our community and not judge them as being great or being poor. And do we have anybody that in modern times now are are addressing that? So, we put it, it's incumbent on ourselves, running a school district, to really address this if there is a deficiency like colors or or numbers or, and and in parts of of the community, rich, poor, that type of thing. Do we have somebody that's that's addressing it from that angle? Like, this is, we're opening shop, we're a repair shop, we're not going to complain about what comes to us. We're going to repair the cars, for example, and we're going to, we're going to fix them. Do we have any PhDs in 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 bringing students to the standard that we want to achieve, like hit the ground running? Are we, are we focusing on that? Do we have anybody that's an expert in that in our district?
So, I think identifying one person as the expert, I'm not sure that we would identify one person.
Or a group.
One person may not have the answer, but the answer is always in the room. And that's the way that I I like to look at things. When we meet at Cabinet with Dr. Gullett every Monday, we have certainly a high level of expertise in that room. We've hired through some of our ESAR funds, the position of our Community Engagement Director, Ms. DeBick. And she is certainly our outreach to that community with this. She definitely brings a high level of knowledge and experience with her to the table and into the conversations that she's able to add. Us as area superintendents, we bring more of the academic and curriculum side. She brings the lens of community engagement. And she listens to the academic side and the needs, and then she is able to have her input from that community engagement lens. She's not only been in education, actually been in education less than a year, but her experiences on the business side of the community that she's able to bring to us and all of her networks that she has have actually, I feel, in looking at our data, helped us make that connection and kind of bridge that gap. We're starting to bridge that gap.
That's positive, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm just going to wrap up Emerald Shores. We have moved the district, now we do not have the Evergreen Oat Crest Attendance Response Committee. We have made that the District Attendance Response Committee because we are going to, we are targeting our schools with attendance and we are moving what worked at a couple of schools. And we're, we're really taking that to the other schools that need that extra stakeholder assistance. We have people from the community that are on that committee with us, as well as Ms. Thrower, as well as district support, that are able to go to these meetings. And we have brought this to Emerald Shores earlier this month, actually earlier this week. And we're able to drill down on those students where attendance has been an issue and a concern and being able to problem-solve attendance issues and being able to get the schools the additional resources that they might need in order to help us make sure that the students are at school. One positive before we leave Emerald Shores, their third-grade math has increased by twenty-seven percent of the students meeting the target average from last year. Fourth-grade math is up ten percent, and fifth-grade math has increased by nine percent of students meeting that target average from the year before. And fifth grade math has increased by 9% of students meeting that target average from the year before. Fifth grade science has also increased by 7% of the students in fifth grade meeting that target average from last year as well. So they're strong with their math and science and continuing that tier one instruction that's there. Greenway Elementary, we'll move over to. When reviewing the data for Greenway Elementary, the data does show that students in kindergarten through fourth grade are continuing to show growth as evidenced by that AP diagnostic data from AP one to AP two. Again, to several of your points earlier, that fifth grade group continues to have limited growth from the beginning of the year to mid-year AP two. The school has worked on an incentive program that they have already implemented for students who have met their weekly iReady goals. Not only their amount of time on the program, but lessons passed, percent, percentage of lessons passed. And they receive incentives for their goals. Third, fourth, and fifth grade continues to be a focus in ELA for us at Greenway as the percent of students meeting the target average has been reduced in all three grades, grades three through five, as compared to last year 2021. The school is addressing this focus area by continuing that strong tier one instruction in ELA. Again, while reteaching that, those quarter one and two standards that they didn't master, students are meeting in small groups prescriptively with their math and reading coaches on a daily basis. In addition, Principal McCurchan also has a small group of third grade students that she pulls as soon as they come off the buses and car line in the mornings that she meets with this group of third graders four days a week to increase those reading comprehension skills. MTSS at Greenway has been restructured and students in grades three through five are reviewing the ELA standards through direct instruction with that double dose by those classroom teachers. Fifth grade math continues to be a focus area for us at Greenway as the percent of students from the target average is down 8% from the 2021 school year. One of the strategies that we're utilizing at Greenway for fifth grade math is we've identified the standards the students are deficient in and using the math content area specialist out there to have targeted instruction with those small groups of identified students. A positive for Greenway Elementary is their third grade math has increased by 11% of the students meeting their target average. And fourth grade math is up as well of the students meeting the target average as compared to the prior school year. That, those are my three schools. And if there are no further questions, yes ma'am?
I'm sorry. I guess this is, I know we're mid-year. So this is not a great question to ask mid-year. But we have our, our elementary schools separated into two categories for a reason. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but based on transformation school numbers right now, does it look as if we might have a school come out of transformation status potentially? And then from Dr. Hembrook's standpoint, what are our schools looking like on her side that might potentially be heading into transformation status? And I don't know if that's a question for you or a question for Dr. Gullett, but I, I mean, we're asking the hard questions today, guys.
Chair, I may, thank you. You were asking great questions today, which I'm going to comment about when we're finished. I can answer that. We are, we are constantly looking at the data. And I think the team started to touch on the intensive work that happens daily and really at a granular level with the data, but we also look at it from a big picture perspective. But yes, there, there may be changes. But that doesn't mean that a school that is not in transformation doesn't need to show progress. So I want to be really clear about that. That is a, a model that we're utilizing to provide a additional layer and some different types of resources to those schools that may need something different. But it doesn't mean that we don't look at every child in the school that they're in and how we can support them. But yes, there, there may be some changes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Whitehouse to begin the conversation for secondary.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we're going to.
Hold on, Mr. Whitehouse. Guys, just you, as you know, we have to do a hard scop at 10:45.
At 10:45, okay.
10:45, so, Mr. Whitehouse, I know you're going to take us home.
Yes, sir. And I'll do, I'll do it a little quicker. All right, so we're going to shift now from our elementary schools over to our secondary, our middle and high schools and look at some of the data that we're seeing from our QSMA results there. Again, first, starting off with ELA. We didn't have as much in the way of shifts of curriculum map in our secondary schools as we did in elementary, but we still want to provide you a standard by standard view for these schools because I think, again, it really helps us to focus in on, when we look at this data, where are we seeing the improvement? And where are we still seeing those opportunities for growth? And again, just like with the elementary schools, you can look at this year over year, last year's sixth grade versus this year's sixth grade, or you can track a cohort and be able to look at how our current seventh graders performed on a standard last year of sixth graders versus how they are this year, which is what we look at as well in terms of trying to isolate some of those areas for remediation and improvement with our schools. So what we see from the data with our English Language Arts is that our sixth grade is our group that we are certainly focused on the most in terms of what we're seeing in their data. And our eighth grade group is our group that is performing the strongest right now in ELA. But ELA of the subjects, just like with elementary, is certainly our area where we are focusing most of our attention right now in terms of building in greater support for improvement. Next, we have our QSMA math results by grade level. Math, we are, just like with elementary, seeing better gains than we are out of ELA and, and performance. Keep in mind, as you look across this group, when we get to eighth grade and even in seventh grade, these are our students who are not in algebra or geometry. So we've got our students who are the strongest in math that are ready to accelerate in math that get pulled out of the traditional seventh and eighth grade math classes and take the algebra and geometry, which we'll show you those results in a moment. So when you see that the numbers look a little lower as you progress, we expect that. Now, once we get to eighth grade, we're really dealing with our students that have struggled historically with math, sitting in a traditional math class. So we expect to see a little bit lower results there. But overall, again, with math, we are seeing a lot of improvement with our students from last year to this year. So here again is our, our algebra and geometry at the middle school level. So these are the most advanced students in middle school in mathematics that take these accelerated courses. We break it down by standard. Again, we, we want to see continued growth. However, traditionally with our algebra and geometry, we usually see about close to 100%, if not 100% pass rate with these assessments at the middle school level because, again, these are our students who are advanced in math. So even when we see some lower numbers in there, certainly areas for us to focus in on, but not great cause for concern when we look at this holistically. Our next assessment, science. We again assess sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. However, only eighth grade takes the state science assessment at the end of the year. So that's the group we do focus the most on. But when they take that assessment, they are assessed on sixth, seventh, and eighth grade standards, which is why we track the data each year because we need to make sure we know where some of those gaps are and they're understanding so that we can build in those supports and make sure they're ready by the end of eighth grade to be successful on that science assessment. We are seeing some strong results in science this year, again, just like we did in elementary. And a lot of that, we're sure, is attributed to the fact that we're able to get our students back in person. We had a lot of students online in secondary, especially middle school last year, as you all recall. Getting them back in person, being, I'll do a lot more hands-on learning in science is certainly attributed to some of that growth. Our next group up here is civics. This is predominantly our seventh graders in middle school who take the civics course and then take the civics end of course exam at the end of the year from the state level. And we are seeing overall improvement in civics learning across the board. So very excited to see that growth in middle school. And then we do not have iReady results that will show with middle school. Unlike elementary school, we do not test every student in iReady. iReady does go up through eighth grade. However, we have used it to really progress monitor our students that we consider tier three, which are those that need the most intervention and support, to have another data piece. Because some of our students in middle school that are taking geometry would test out of everything in iReady and would test for days before we finally figured out what their cap was. So we, we don't provide that ready just because we don't test everybody in middle school. So I'll turn it over now, Mr. Frazier. We'll highlight a couple of our middle schools that we are paying attention to right now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As we take a look at Lake Weir Middle School and review some of the highlight points and data pieces that are here, you'll notice sixth grade ELA and seventh grade ELA are strong focus areas for Lake Weir Middle School as the percent of students meeting the target average in sixth grade is down 10% from the prior year and seventh grade is down 13%. So the school is addressing this focus area by creating a student-specific action plan for each grade level and subject area that involves multiple staff members to address attendance and targeted instruction during their intervention acceleration time during the day. District Program Specialists are supporting collaborative planning as well as through side-by-side modeling and coaching. Sixth grade math is also a focus area for Lake Weir Middle School as a percent of students meeting the target average is down 11% from the prior year. The school is addressing sixth grade math by identifying the standards that students struggled with from QSMA quarter one and quarter two data and utilizing the content area specialists to provide targeted instruction to those students. Eighth grade science, on a positive note, is up 9% from the prior year and civics is up 12% as well. Taking a look at North Marion Middle School as a spotlight. Sixth grade ELA and seventh grade ELA are also focus areas for North Marion Middle School as a percent of students meeting the target average in sixth grade is down 2% from 2021 and 14% in seventh grade. The school is addressing this focus area by having data chats with each individual student and having those students set goals from now until the end of the school year. They're also providing targeted small group instruction twice a week for identified students. District Program Specialists are supporting collaborative planning as well through side-by-side modeling and coaching. Seventh grade civics is down 5% from the 2021 school year. To address that, Dr. Renfro has, Dr. Renfro has been supporting civics as well as the Assistant Principal leading those collaborative plannings. Common checks for understanding occur weekly to monitor student progress as well. On a positive note, eighth grade science has had, from the 2021 school year, a 10% increase and sixth grade math increased 29% from 2021. I'll let Mr. Whitehouse take over to go over the high school data.
All right. So as we look at high school, only ninth and 10th grade are assessed in English Language Arts at the high school level. Ninth grade is certainly the group that we're focused in a little bit more with ELAs. We're not seeing as strong a performance from them as we are our 10th grade group across the district. And again, you can look at this data as we have with the other groups, year to year, or looking at the cohort trend, how they have performed from ninth grade to 10th grade. For math, our students take algebra on and geometry. Those are both graduation requirements and there are end of course assessments for both of those. Again, by the time we get to high school, the students who are in algebra and geometry are the ones who were not accelerated there in middle school. So we anticipate, again, these results to look a little lower than our middle school results because these are the students who have traditionally struggled with mathematics coming into high school. Our biology and US history scores in high school are showing a lot more strength in our, our trend, our positive trend upward for both of those subjects. Again, getting those students back in for hands-on learning with biology has been critical in that area. Biology is predominantly a 10th grade course, but we certainly have ninth graders as well that assess in that. And then US history, also graduation requirement, is predominantly our 11th grade students that take that course and that QSMA. And we're anticipating better results in both of those this year. Along with our QSMA data, we also support our schools in monitoring their graduation tracking with their high schools as well as acceleration tracking, both of which are additional school grade components that will be factored into the high school's school grade that's unique to them. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Frazier and we'll look at Lake Weir High School's QSMA results.
Thank you for Mr. Whitehouse. So taking a look at Lake Weir High School as we review the data for them. Ninth and 10th grade ELA are focus areas for Lake Weir High School as a percent of students in ninth grade decreased by 11% from the prior year and 10th grade by 6%. So the school is addressing this focus area by creating a student-specific action plan for each grade level and subject area that does involve multiple staff members to address attendance and targeted instruction for identified students. The school also progress monitors their most struggling learners using Reading Plus and Math 180 to develop targeted instructional groups. On a positive note for Lake Weir High School, biology increased by 14% and US history improved by 5%. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not a question, it's just a comment because, and you can sit down, Mr. Frazier, go ahead. It's just a comment because we keep, I'm, I'm going to keep talking until I'm blue in the face about those fifth graders, that cohort. And they're heading to you next year, Mr. Frazier. So while we keep talking about them in elementary school and we have iReady data and we have all of that to show us, I know we don't track iReady data when they get to sixth grade. And so this board just needs to be aware that that's a group that we're always going to need to look at. They're in the most unique situation. I don't want to ever put blame on it, but they're in the most unique situation of any cohort that we've ever had in the history of cohorts because we know that that group is containing students that potentially would not have been there if they didn't experience third grade during a pandemic. And next year, they're heading to sixth grade. So that's just a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to thank all of you as board members. It makes my day as a superintendent to hear the board asking really important questions about our student success. That is our goal, right? To make sure that they're getting what they need, asking about resources in their learning. So thank you for that. And several things have been brought forward this morning that I wanted to comment on. The partnerships, the commitment we have. And we put in writing to say to the community, we're going to, we're committing to working with the community, with the parents, with the grandparents, the family members, to help us to elevate student success. I think that's in a critical piece. We have the joy of serving public education and we meet all students where they are. That's the great gift that we have. And so we're committed to meeting them where they are. When you talk about early learning and what that really means, we're a K-12 institution of great learners, but we have to make sure that we level the playing field for all children when they come to us. And so I'm thrilled to hear the questions beyond the tested grades. The elephant in the room often has been, conversations over years in education have been about the tested grades. It's much more than that. We don't wait until the students get to a tested grade that's recognized by the state. And so, starting early and seeing it through is really important. So I appreciate the questions about K-12. The gaps are tremendous. We've been talking about this since the beginning of the pandemic and just beginning to realize what those gaps would be. We, we anticipated that and think we haven't seen even the, the end of that. We're still in the middle of this. But we don't use it as an excuse. We use it as an opportunity. Again, we are laser focused on every child, meeting them where they are. And when you look at the targets, Mr. Browning, I know you asked the question about the targets on there. That, that tells us this is where we need to be for each child. How do we get them there? And not as, even as a group, but each child, how do we get them there? And so that takes a very prescriptive nature of our wonderful, dedicated folks in the field, the teachers, the support staff, the principals, everyone working together. Mental health and wellness, everybody working together, excuse me, to get their needs addressed fully. And so I appreciate those conversations and a lot of work left to do. The other piece that I heard today that I want to highlight is the communication with our families. I'm going to go back to that piece for a minute because we haven't gotten there yet. But sharing with our families about, this is what your child's going to learn this year. This is what they're going to learn when they come to our schools. This is what they're going to learn each year. My vision with that is that we're going to be sharing that with them. So they'll know, here are some things you could do at home because in this next grade, here's what they're going to learn. And so we've done that. We have great pockets of success in that in some of our schools. But district-wide, what does that look like? Where do you find access to that on our websites? How do we get information to them before they come to us in kindergarten? So the work is underway, but we still have great work to do. Last item is appreciate that the state recognizes the early learning piece. They have recognized we need to invest in public education so that our students coming with a kindergarten readiness can be successful. We used to say that our goal was for each child to make a year's worth of growth in a year. That is no longer sufficient. A year's worth of growth puts children further and further behind each year. And that gap widens and for some, the research is very concerning that they'll never make up those gaps. We can't let that happen. We have to make sure that they're progressing beyond. For many of them, they need to make much more than a year's worth of growth in a year. So it's a tremendous, tremendous challenge for our folks in the field, in the schools, with our students every day. And, and I know that, they feel it and that's why they're passionate and they work so hard to be here. But we support them in doing that and want to provide them the resources. And so, thank you, board, for asking the question about what can we do to support them? So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Browning?
Yes. Sort of following on that note, I would like to see an effort. I know we've already gone a direction in terms of marketing and communicating with the families. And that's, we've talked a lot about that today with the community. Like this report, I would like to see a kind of an evaluation, if you would. If you were selling Ford trucks, for example, and you had the report of how we did with F-250s, for example, and you had the report, how understandable is it? And I'd like to see a sort of a study group where we have a standard, let them see it like any person looking at the data, and how communicative is that data to the community? Like examples, for example, asterisk, example, this is this and this is this. And here's where an example of poor performance, I don't want to exactly use that, but this is exceptional performance. And anecdotal things like this does not include the highest performers, for example, you know, like that. Wouldn't take a whole lot to add to these raw numbers in terms of communicating. If you took 100 people, you took 10 people, the bigger the sample, the more valid it is. I think you could get, go a long way towards communicating, be very exciting. And then maybe sample and test and then refine it and get to that communicative state. Marketing ultimately is everything in terms of success with your community. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Any other comments, any public comments concern us?
I do, I do. I've just kind of been thinking a lot, and I know we're just, the board members and talking heads. But when I was hearing everything, and we all know this, this is important, and I hear there's very important key parts, and we know what they are. There are our student, there are our parents, and also it's important we've learned, well, we've always known it, is attendance. To me, that's what I see as key. Like, that's what I see. And a very wise woman one time explained to me, like with a, like a bar stool or something, if there's three prongs or legs, and if one isn't there, it'll fall. And so I keep hearing that communication is key. And when I think of communication, probably the people that have the best access to our parents are the teachers. It begins with the teachers. And I would really like to maybe see an initiative or just thinking out loud of how we could build those relationships, how our teachers could build relationships with their parents, of their students, and encourage them because that's the key. We know that the teacher is the key if the student's there on how well they do in their academics in school. And the teacher could be the one to, you know, explain to their student, hey, you know what, they're doing great here. Maybe here's some areas we need to work on. Are you reading 20 minutes a night with your student, you know, and giving good ideas? And I'm just throwing some things out there. But I feel up on the higher level, I feel like it's easy for us to mandate and to say all these things, but the real work begins in the classroom. And I also would like to see this board, if we could somehow do a better job of building our teachers and their morale. And I'm not even sure. I'm just thinking that's where probably a lot of this work truly needs to begin, is in the schools. And probably coming from the bottom up rather from the top going down. And those were just a few of my thoughts. I don't know if I've made any sense up here or not. But I do know enough that, you know, the parents and the teachers working together for that student, anything and everything can be done.
And I agree. I agree, Ms. King. I think we have to reinforce that communication. We're not adversaries. We're all on the same team, the parents, the teachers, the board. We're all on the same team, and we have to be pushing that communication. And I think the biggest way to keep kids accountable is that we as the adults keep those lines of communication open and making sure that we're just talking about what's going on and where this kid is, and we have to do that. I think sometimes parents see us as adversaries, as the enemy, and it's us against them. Never the case, never will be the case as far as the district. We're all on the same team. We all want the same goal, and the same goal is to get those kids across the finish line and graduate them and get them on off into society.
And I have one more thing. And also, one asset that usually the early education teachers have is they are really good with building those relationships with the parents early on. So if those relationships with the parents in the early education can be built, you know, and then when the student is in third grade and all of a sudden come meet the teacher and hears what's going on, that can be intimidating. So that's another asset I would believe with the early education and BPK is, you know, that relationship building.
Right. Ms. Row, then Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Coming from the high school and middle school realm, I didn't realize that parent, required parent conferences at some point were no longer required. And I agree with you, Board Member King, that is where the rubber meets the road. The teacher sees the student every single day. And I would hope that there would be an effort in the direction of restoring parent conferences and putting technology to good use through FaceTime, through Zoom, honoring the fact that many parents are working, you know, may not have transportation, whatever it is, overcoming those barriers so that there is true and regular communication going on at that level. Classroom dojo, I know a lot of teachers use that at the elementary level to communicate with parents. But having it be supported at our level for whatever it takes to increase that type of communication and make it an expectation. I don't know that we're going to be able to work our way through this without having that solid foundational communication and really supporting it. Also, too, as from a high level, supposedly as board members, we had Ms. Bender from Westport High School standing in front of us last week saying, "Board members, please come and visit our schools, not just for the ceremony. Come and look." And that couldn't make more sense to me because how do we make decisions on behalf of the troops in the trenches
We don't see.
if we're not even out there
Correct.
on the battlefield? So those are some things that came to my mind as a result of this conversation. I'm so thankful for our business partners and for our Public Education Foundation. We now have business partners for every single school. Some schools have two. You know, the level of community support is there, and it's just bringing all of the pieces together, which has been hard to do because everything got so fractured, you know, during the pandemic. And I cannot wait to continue to have these types of conversations instead of all the other conversations that we had to have because of the times we were in. So those are the things that are on my mind. I had no idea that parent conferences were no longer regular and happening. And to me, that's just foundational.
Yes.
So I actually have some prepared comments I was going to save to the end during board comments, but I think it's actually more pertinent to share here because we've talked all about data. That's all we've been talking about. And on Tuesday night, I also obviously discussed some other alarming data points regarding first semester grades, attendance, and parent involvement. And those comments have received some attention. I actually want to express a little bit more of the purpose in which I made them. First of all, I certainly wasn't trying to be adversarial solely in a parent perspective. If that was how it was interpreted, I'm not dogging on parents. That wasn't my intention entirely on this at all. Because bringing attention to student apathy was not only also a call of action to our staff, I want to ensure that we understand that, that while identifying our struggling students by name and tracking and incentivizing their attendance are important school-based strategies, that was not my point. It was actually a call to action for external resources, parent involvement and beyond, our community, our civic groups, our retired teachers, our faith-based leaders, all of these folks to be part of helping our students when they're struggling the most. And frankly, I read an article recently Anne Cristiano and Annie Neiman wrote called, it was in Stanford Social Innovation Review, called "Stop Raising Awareness Already." So if the comments that I made from last week, as well as those we've talked about today, stop at awareness, we've solved nothing. So that's why I vow to continue bringing this up each time we have an opportunity to talk about it because we need to talk and take action. So we do need people coming out of our community to sign up as volunteers. It's really easy to do now. It's all electronic. We need them to come in and be mentors for our kids. We need proven community-based mentor programs. We have plenty to frankly have waiting lists full of people wanting to get involved. We have a lot of those that are already coming into our schools. But I spoke with Megan Magamol actually this morning from Public Education Foundation, and I believe she's going to be talking to her board potentially about how they might be able to get involved. I have a meeting next week with some in the faith-based community. And I also talked this morning with Ms. DeBick actually about what you were just talking about in communication and what the recent survey that we had showed about the communication disconnect from our schools and our teachers to our parents. Again, not trying to place blame anywhere. This is a multi-pronged, multifaceted, external call for resources. And I know that others on this board certainly would be happy to go and share with civic groups, community groups, the MEA Retired Teachers Group, anybody that we can talk to to ask for additional support, additional help, and certainly our parent partnership events are part of that. So if we can, I'd like to see us in a hyper-targeted attempt from March to May to shift some of these numbers. I mean, we're looking at second quarter data. So if there's a way that we can potentially shift these numbers in a hyper-targeted way, classroom academics, attendance, discipline, test scores, overall student mental health and apathy. And I want to see external resources as much as we can to come in and support and be a part of this major shift. So what we can do now, or what can we do now to be prepared for what's coming tomorrow? Because Megan and I affectionately called our conversation today "to take on today" because if we don't, there's little hope for tomorrow. So those were going to be my board comments, but I felt that putting them right here was actually a little more pertinent because this is what we're talking about, the student's success, our student data. We've talked attendance, we've talked parent conferences, we've talked all of these different components. And also I wanted to express how much I believe the external community needs to be a part of these strategies. Thanks.
Can I say one thing about that Skyward, though? If we are going to be so adamant that our parents are looking at Skyward, which, you know, hopefully they are, then we need to make sure that as a district that we're pulling our end too. So if we're saying that the grades should be in there by a certain date and this time, then it needs to happen because I can tell you, nothing is more frustrating when I get the phone calls from the angry parents that says, "I've been looking for weeks and there's nothing," and it's the end of the semester, or the end of the quarter, and all of a sudden five, 10, 15 grades are put in, and there's nothing else they can do. So it's not just one-sided. We need to make sure that we, as a district, are doing, you know, what we're asking of our parents to do too. I think it's both, basically.
Ms. Row.
And that really is a great point because the access, we know, that was magnified over the shutdown and how many parents do struggle with even having connectivity and navigating. And, you know, I don't know if, I know when I go to Publix, I can push a button and I can get the information in Spanish. I don't know if Skyward has that capability.
It's not.
So, but that's why conversations like these are so important because there are so many people that are working so hard to do it the right way every single day. And we need to empower everybody for that right way to be as user-friendly and as approachable as possible. You know, again, coming from the high school realm, making my phone calls home and having parents say to me, "You know what? You are the first person from the school system that's ever called to say something positive about my child." Now, I'll give you the fact that a lot of the kids I've worked with might not have been the easiest to love at first glance. But if I take on that role, then I need to embrace it, you know? And so there is a lot that can be done, that I have no doubts will be done because of these conversations. It encourages all of us to raise our game. And I think, I pray, that our schools are starting to understand that the support is there. You know, we are asking, we are championing, and we want nothing more than to see the schools be solid, successful, interactive, unafraid to say what they need, and that's how we're going to get that accelerated progress. So I'm so happy to be having these conversations.
Thank you. Real quickly, because we're going to, we're going to do a hard break. We have a public comment? Okay. It has to be brief. It has to be very, very brief.
It'll be brief. Thank you, Chair.
And then go ahead. Who has our public comment?
I appreciate it. I am very heartened by these comments, starting on this side and going in this direction. And the reason is they tend to come to a target, and that target is what we do for a living. You know, that's the district that I represent a portion of the population on this board. And outliers, I tend to think, are a huge benefit, a huge help, but they are not the key. They are not because it sort of puts blame on, other than our core. I see our core as the center of the target, and that's it. I have call after call after call of problems where they can't work. It doesn't work. It doesn't work. And I try to work those out, and I know we all get those. But the outliers are not the answer. It's us in the core, in the center, doing the job of the district K through 12 or starting, you know, just start wherever you want to start, and let's end at PhDs and then successful lives. So thank you. I was very, very heartened by those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. We have one public comment?
My name is Steve Sweat, and I came to this meeting, and really, the one reason I came online, I appreciate that it was online and that these are televised, but, you know, and it's probably me, so I'm going to take the blame for my incompetence. But like, it's just not clear. Where's the Rosetta Song? You know, like, so I get this quarterly mastery. So you've got the red lines, the green lines, but there's no legend. There's no legend. These breakdowns mean nothing without a legend. Now, I heard it here, and I'm kind of following it here, but if we're trying to communicate with the parents, this is not good communication. I mean, if you just go to that website and you don't know what you're talking about, I'm still not sure what iReady is. I'm guessing it's Instruction Ready? So I'm just, and I'm just saying the truth. And I get this when I come here, well, it's very faint, and really, I just soon watch that, but that's fine. You know, that's a printing problem. Questions, like the extra hour, I'm still unclear. Is that an extra hour inclusive into the school schedule? Or an extra hour included, you know, after school added to it? Is it, and the K-5, what do we expect someone at the K-5 level to be? I'm going to be blunt. I expect nothing. Now, I know in reality, historically, the kids learn their colors, and that's what a mother and a family and a father does. But if that doesn't happen, I don't think that's a new phenomenon. But first grade too. So let's say someone gets to the first grade level, and we've got three categories, excellent, good, and not good. Does the parent notify that your child's at the very good level? Do we categorize the kids, to teach them by the level they're at in the first grade? Or do we put them all in the same class? Do we have remedial classes in first grade? These are just some of the questions I have sitting here. What are our expectations? Do we notify the, whatever level they're at, do we notify within the first month or two to say, "Your child's at the high end of the level, first grade, K-5. Thank you." Low end, "Hey, your child's not, you know, we need to help you." Low end, "Hey, your child's not, you know, we need to help you." Do we do that? And if that's the instruction, talk about communication. We need to put this in the paper and tell everybody, "Get your child ready for K-5." Because I'll tell you where we're headed. We're headed to K-1, K-2. We're headed, it takes a village thing, where, you know, like the Spartans, they took your kid at seven and raised him. So what do we, you know, just, I know you, such a complex parliament, and I appreciate being here, I appreciate the communication. But so far, K-5, let's work on one thing at a time. Specifically, if a child gets to K-5 and he's way below level, how does the teacher handle that? And when we talk about communication, we don't need to add more to the teacher's back, unless we give them a mechanism. I don't know. I'm going to go to one of these school-open things, but I'm sure the turnout's poor. I'm sure the turnout's poor. I don't even know if we have PTAs anymore. It's a rhetorical question, because I've only got three minutes, but we know what the problem is.
You have 10 seconds, sir.
Is my three minutes up?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swett, for your comments. Listen, I did want to say this before we close on this part. The data, thank you guys for what you're bringing forward in the data. Ms. Campbell, the information that you pulled last week was excellent data. Imperative data that we, as a district, needed to know. My question is always going to be, now that we have the data, what are we going to use the data to do? And if we're not, if we're just pulling data just for the sake of pulling it, does no good. I need to, I need to see what we're going to do with it, and figure out how we can change the data, change, use the data to change the results. So we have to, we have to recess right now, and we're going to recess for an attorney-client session at 10:52.
So I am teaching session one. And teaching session two. Session two, March ninth, March twenty-third.
We're back on from our executive's session. We're going to continue with our administrative briefing and work session. The next we have is our K through twelve mathematics instructional materials adoption. Ms. Leeds.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jennifer Leeds. I serve as the instruction materials coordinator for K twelve. This morning, I wanted to bring to you the recommended instruction materials for adoption. The state of Florida is running its cycle right now for the adoption of mathematics instruction materials for grades K through twelve. Marion County Public Schools is elected to continue to follow the state adoption cycle and process. And so we too are working on our mathematics K twelve instruction materials adoption. At this point in time, I do want to make sure that I share that as we were last year in a situation where the state had not finalized their adoption process for ELA, we are sitting in the same situation as that again this year for mathematics. Our adoption process is kind of running concurrently with the state adoption process. With that being said, we did feel that it was very important that we started our process here in Marion County as soon as the state released their list of publishers that had submitted intent to submit to the state. So that we were doing the best that we could to ensure that we were in a position to have materials in the hands of students for the start of next school year as we were implementing those new best math standards so that teachers had those resources to support instruction in the classrooms for our students. At this point in time, we are expecting that the final adoption list from the state for mathematics should be posted sometime in late spring. So we have built in some safeguards in our process that I'll get into in a little bit. But at this point in time, let me go ahead and share our process and where we're at at this point in time. So the state released their short bid list the end of September. And what that is, is the publishers who submitted to the state their intent to submit materials to the state for consideration. So that was again the end of September. By the end of October, Marion County Public Schools put out their call to publishers through the Ed Credible Evaluation Platform. That is a digital platform that all publishers are also connected to. And so their notifications are received through Ed Credible that Marion County Public Schools was going to open up their process for evaluations for math materials. And if they were interested in submitting to Marion County Public Schools for consideration, that they could submit their materials to us through that platform. That platform also serves as our evaluation tool. Members of our committees that have evaluated materials had access to review those materials through that evaluation platform. So there were five elementary publishers that were contacted through Ed Credible. And there were eight secondary And there were eight secondary publishers that were contacted through EdCredible. When I mention those eight secondary, when we get into it a little bit further, you'll see that this year with math, there are a lot of different math subjects. But not all publishers submitted for all of the subject areas. So it gets a little bit. You won't see eight publishers as we're moving forward just because they don't all submit for all of the subject areas. Some publishers stop at K five, some publishers go K through, go up through Algebra one, some move further up to Algebra two. Some only submitted for the mathematics electives. So it's not consistent for all publishers across the board. So that's the difference in the numbers as we move forward. So November fifth was the deadline for publishers to have everything submitted if they were interested in being considered by Marion County Public Schools. November fifth through November twenty-ninth, we had our district evaluation committee that started evaluating these materials. The things that they were looking for, number one, we wanted to make sure that the digital connections were going to work with Marion County Public Schools. We wanted to ensure that the publishers were going to be able to interact with our Canvas platform so that students and teachers could interact through Canvas both at school and from home. We also wanted to make sure that the publishers were reading, were meeting the depth of the standards that our instructional personnel believed that we needed to meet in order for our students to be successful in mastering the new best math standards. Once that evaluation was completed by the district evaluation committee, then we, those decisions were made for those publishers that were going to move forward for consideration and being evaluated by our actual adoption committee. So on the next few slides, what you'll see are the publishers that were moved forward to be actually reviewed and evaluated by our adoption committee. So the publishers for grades K through five that were moved forward for evaluation were McGraw-Hill and Savis Learning. There were two subcommittees that were evaluating these materials. We had a group that was specifically evaluating for grades K through two and a group that was specifically evaluating for grades three through five. But both of those subcommittees both evaluated McGraw-Hill and Savis. For grades six through eight, there were three publishers that were put forward for review by our adoption committee. And that was HMH, McGraw-Hill, and Savis. For grades nine through twelve, as I explained before, there was not consistency in submissions from all of the publishers. But these were the publishers that were put forward for the subject areas indicated. I do want to draw your attention to the pre-calculus honors. You will see that there was only one publisher that was being moved forward for evaluation for pre-calculus honors. And that was because they were the only ones that were submitted for evaluation. So that's why there was only, only titles evaluated for Savis for pre-calculus honors. So our adoption review committees are made up of a total of up to fifteen members per subcommittee. Those fifteen members include up to five community members that are appointed by the school board, two parent members that apply through a district application process, as well as eight teacher members that also apply through a teacher application, district application process. This year, I'm excited to say that we have had an overwhelming response for interest and participation in our adoption committees. So much so that we had to turn away a few people, unfortunately. But those people that were turned away were ultimately encouraged to attend events that we had later on that I'll get into so that their input can be a part of this process. So our review committee timeline, January sixth started our training for our committee members. They had two opportunities for training. January sixth was the first date and January eighth was the second date. That was a two-hour training to go over the expectations of a committee member as well as going over a training to utilize that EdCredible platform as well as where the committee members could locate the new Florida best standards for mathematics so that they had access to those as they were reviewing those materials. During the time until January the nineteenth, all of the members of the review committee had access to the materials digitally through that EdCredible platform, as well as being able to come out to the professional library to review those materials in person as well. And that would include all aspects of the programs that were submitted, not just the actual textbooks, but also the digital platforms that are offered by those programs. On January the twelfth, we held our school administrator review where we invited school administrators to come and review these materials in person. We asked for feedback from those administrators to provide a recommendation so that information could be provided to our adoption committee as well. So that was an additional voice at the end table when those decisions were being made, when those votes were being made. Also on January twelfth, following the administrator review, we had our community review night. And again, as I shared before, we had some opportunities where we had to unfortunately turn down some people that had applied to participate on the committees this year because of the limit of number of seats. But this is that aspect, the community review night, where community members, teachers that were not able to participate on, on the adoption committee, parents that weren't able to participate, this was that night for them to have access to those materials and again provide review feedback that would ultimately be provided to our adoption committee so that those voices too could be heard in their decision-making process. On January the twentieth, our adoption committee came together in person. We met at Westport High School. Those committees were broke out into their subcommittees to review all of that feedback from community night, review the feedback that was provided by the school administrators, as well as for them to share their own individual feedback that they had from their independent reviews of the material. So this would be the first time that the committee came together so that they were providing their own individual feedback on those reviews. So the committee recommendation process, again, all of the materials were reviewed and the feedback was, was provided to those community members. And that feedback, I do want to stress again, was provided from community members, from administrators, and the committee members themselves. And we did have a tremendous amount of feedback this year from both community members and administrators. So I'm very excited to see that the fidelity of our adoption process is moving forward and it's growing. And the interest is growing here in Marion County to be a part of this process. So the committee comes together and then as a group, they discuss all of this feedback. And then at some point, they decide that they are ready to vote. When they do their vote, that then is their recommendation that is provided to the superintendent of schools. The superintendent then takes all of that information that she has received from the committee and then she makes her recommendation to the board for recommendation for adoption by Marion County Public Schools. Board policy four point two one does explain that the school district is required to have an adoption review committee and that that committee would make a recommendation to the superintendent who is to take that information into consideration prior to making a recommendation to the school board for the adoption of materials. With that being said, it's my honor to share with you all that the superintendent's recommendations for grades K through five is in alignment with the recommendation of the instruction materials adoption committee to recommend Envision Florida Best Mathematics for Grades K through five. And that is done by Savis Learning Company. And again, that is both grades K through two and the grades three through five committees were both in alignment. One of the things that they were very excited about for this particular decision was the fact that, if you all remember, we are also utilizing that Savis program for our ELA adoption. And the committee felt that it was going to be very important and helpful for families that it was the same platform that the students would be using. So there'd be less for the parents and the students to have to learn to re-navigate digitally, that it would all be coming from the same platform. Obviously, they were also very interested in the depth of the standards that were provided and the additional resources that are provided for parents that are offered through this program. As I explained earlier, the state is currently in the process of their adoption as well. And so when we finalize our adoption, there is, we will hopefully have that final adoption list from the state. Right now, we are providing you an alternate recommendation from, from the adoption committee. And that is that just in case that Envision program from Savis is not on the state's ultimate adoption list, that this would be the alternate that the adoption committee was recommending to Dr. Gullett as, as an alternate in case the first one was not on that ultimate adoption list. So you will see this as we move forward, that there will be that very first recommendation. That is their recommendation and her recommendation. And then with that alternate, should their first choice not make it to the state adopted list. Moving on to grades six through eight, Dr. Gullett is recommending Florida Reveal Math for Grades six through eight by McGraw-Hill. This was also the same recommendation that was made by the adoption committee. The alternate being from Florida Best into Math, grade six through eight from HMH. For Algebra one, geometry, and Algebra two, again, Dr. Gullett's recommendation in alignment with the recommendation from the adoption committee is to move forward with Florida Reveal Algebra one by McGraw-Hill, Florida Reveal Geometry by McGraw-Hill, and Florida Reveal Algebra two by McGraw-Hill, with the alternate being from the Savis Learning Program for Algebra one, geometry, and Algebra two. I do also want to bring your attention to the fact that grades six through eight is in alignment with the same program for Algebra one, geometry, and Algebra two. We found that when we were in the process of the committees deliberating and having conversations, that the six through eight committee was very adamant that they did not want to make a decision solely on their own thoughts. They wanted to have input from the Algebra one, geometry, and Algebra two committee as well because they know that teachers that are teaching grades six through eight mathematics very well could also be teaching the Algebra one and geometry in middle school. And they were very concerned about that connection. In the end, both subcommittees both went with the same program. And so there was no concern that anybody was shifting based upon what another group was doing. But I did want to bring your attention that that was a great concern. And we were very pleased to see that independently, the subcommittees aligned on their own choosing the same program. For high school mathematics electives, there were four courses that were called for, for adoption. The first two courses here are for Mathematics for College Algebra as well as for Mathematics for Data and Financial Literacy. The recommendations from Dr. Gullett are in alignment with the adoption committee's recommendations as well, with the first choice being College Prep Algebra: Mathematics for College Readiness, Florida Edition from National Geographic Learning, Cengage, with the alternate coming from HMH for College Algebra. For Mathematics for Data and Financial Literacy, the first recommendation is Financial Algebra: Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications Tax Code Update by National Geographic Learning, Cengage, with the alternate being coming from the Savis Learning Program. For pre-calculus honors, again, in alignment with the adoption committee's recommendations, Dr. Gullett is recommending Pre-Calculus Graphical Numerical Algebraic from Savis Learning Company, with Savis Learning Company also being as the alternate for their title of Pre-Calculus Enhanced with Graphing Utilities. For Probability and Statistics Honors, in alignment with the adoption committee's recommendation, Dr. Gullett is recommending Statistics and Probability with the Applications by Bedford, Freeman, and Worth, with the alternate being from Savis Learning Stats Modeling in the World. So at this point in time, I just want to share with you where we are at and the next steps that are involved in our process. So today marks, at this work session marks the presentation of Dr. Gullett's recommendations, the superintendent's recommendations for the K twelve mathematics adopted materials for Marion County Public Schools. Following today's presentation, by statute, we are required to provide a minimum of twenty days of digital access to our community members. And that will be posted on the front page of the Marion County Public Schools website. Instructions will be provided as to how parents can navigate each of these different publishers to access those materials. On March the twenty-second, there will be a public hearing held to hear any feedback, public comments on those materials. So that would be after that twenty-day posting. That's when we would have that, that public hearing for, again, our community members to have that opportunity to provide us additional feedback prior to the board making their final decision. On April the twelfth, which would be the very following board meeting, there would be another public hearing for the board to finalize their approval of these adopted materials. At that point in time, by statute, that opens up a thirty-day formal objection window that allows opportunity for members of the community, community to once again provide any feedback that they have on the decisions of the board to adopt these materials. On May twenty-fourth, should there be any formal objections that are received within those thirty days, May twenty-fourth would be when we would hold those formal hearings to hear those objections on the materials ultimately adopted by the board. If there are no objections, no changes on that May twenty-fourth meeting, then we'd be able to move forward with purchases so that we can align ourselves to hopefully have our materials in hand for the start of the new school year and to also begin making plans for professional development opportunities for our teachers over the summer so that they are prepared once those materials hit their hands. Whoops, I just turned off the TV. Okay, here we go. So the public access, as I mentioned before, this is an image that, what that will look like. So there will be links that will be there so parents don't have to worry about copying and pasting. They can just click on those applicable links for those materials that they would like to review. That will be available on our, on our homepage, the MarionSchools.net homepage. They'll be listed as the recommended instruction materials for adoption. And again, the specific information as to how to navigate each of the platforms will be provided in this documentation. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Rana?
Yes, the, going back to the selection committee, I, I, I realize it's a huge endeavor when you have so many books and so many subjects. I got a lot of feedback that it was almost overwhelming, it was overwhelming and almost impossible to achieve. Being in charge of that or following it closely and handling the comments, do you have any thoughts or recommendations that might make that more, say, humanly possible to actually review that much data in that short period of time? Any thoughts on it from, from your perspective?
So as I shared earlier, the state's list of the publishers that had submitted intent to be reviewed by the state did not come out until the end of September. So by the time we received that information and are able to put together our, our call for, for publishers, we had a very quick turnaround in a month's worth of time to get that call out to those selected publishers along with the expectations for Marion County Public Schools. We could not move that any further up because we wouldn't have had that information from the state. So at this point in time, it would be a whole lot easier if we had information from the state as far as who was submitting to the state or if their list was going to be out earlier. We could extend out and provide more time for review, but based upon the requirements by Florida State Statute for the adoption process, that would put us into a situation where our finalized adoption would not happen until possibly the middle of the summer, which then we would not be able to be ordering books until August, then not having our materials in the hands of our students and teachers for the start of the new school year where they are then expected to be held accountable for teaching those new standards that are being implemented by the start of next school year.
Do you, do you think, that's on the timeline, and I appreciate it, it's, it's tough. And I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm trying to, I'm looking for possible improvements. And could we expand the, let's just say the duty sessions? Like expand the scope of this? We had more people, we can't expand the time. You know, maybe we got a little bit of room perhaps.
Right.
Do you see any, any, any opportunity in that direction? And would that help? Is that, from what you saw, and just the overwhelmed component?
Right. That is a good question, and it's a frustration that is experienced in all districts. Just about all of the districts in the state are sitting at the same exact point that we are sitting right now. Districts are about two weeks, give or take, our particular position right now. So we're all sitting in the same, same situation. Here in Marion County, we do have that district evaluation process where we try to eliminate anything that we know that if it got forward to the, the adoption committee, that it would be something that ultimately would not be able to work for Marion County. If we were putting forward things for them to review that ultimately couldn't work in Marion County, that would be a waste of their time. And so we do as much as we possibly can on the And so we do as much as we possibly can on the front end so that the time that they do have to evaluate these materials are dedicated to the things that we know are going to work and we are comfortable and confident in those materials because we know that the time is short and very valuable. We know that our teachers are busy, and this is something that they do outside of their contracted day. We also understand that our parents that participate on the committee and the community members that participate on the committee are also very busy throughout their day. So this is done outside of their normal obligations and everyday life. We're hoping that the district's adoption process, that the district, the state's adoption process is going to be streamlined a little bit further as we're moving forward. We do know that they are already preparing for the social studies adoption, and so our hopes, our things are moving a little bit faster, therefore not putting districts in a crunch for the social studies adoption that will be taking place next school year.
Good, good, a very complete answer. The, and maybe you're not privy to this, but did the, did the final selection match up pretty nicely to the vote? In other words, I know we have ultimately, was it pretty compatible with that? And I'm looking for a very, very broad brush here, and Superintendent's not present, I would ask her.
Yes, sir. So on-
Her representative is here.
Okay, okay. Margaret, if you, if you could address that question, how close was that to, you know, in a broad brush sense, to the, to the vote and recommendation by the committees?
Thank you, Board Member Browning. I'm going to direct it back to Ms. Leeds because she'll be able to answer your question. She has that information.
Thank you.
So on the K-2 Adoption Committee, there were five recommendations for the Savis Learning Program. There were no recommendations for the McGraw-Hill, but they were all in agreement that if Savis was not recommended, that they were very comfortable with McGraw-Hill being the alternate selection. None of those committee members opted to elect, for none of them being recommended to move forward. So you had a total alignment with that, with K-2. In grades three, five, it was very similar. There were, there was a difference of one vote in the grades three through five. In grades six through eight, it was unanimous. And in grades Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, it was everybody except for one person that was in agreement with the recommendation. And then it was unanimous in our high school electives. So everything was in alignment, there was nothing that was borderline. Everybody was quite happy with the materials and very comfortable with what was being presented to them and their recommendations.
Thank you.
Ms. Leeds, you did state this, I'm just making sure I heard it right. Our timeline with the adoption does not start until we get the list from the state. And we can't move until we get the approval list from the state. Am I correct?
So in theory, we could move before we had the list from the state, but what would have to hap, but what would ultimately happen though is that our call to publishers would be wide open to all publishers, not necessarily knowing who is applying to the state to be considered. So in order to help facilitate our goal of having state adopted materials, we do wait for that list of who is the intent, intending to be considered by the state so that we are narrowing that down and again, reducing the workload of what would all have to be reviewed here in Marion County.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Two quick questions, and I think that you did address this, but now that we've chosen the books that we want to move forward with, about what timeline do we think the state is going to give us their list? Did you say that when we're anticipating that?
We're in hopes that they are going to have it by the end of the spring.
Okay.
That is our hope, but there is nothing that is defined that says by said date that they would have that posted. They are required by same statutes, following the same process for their adoption at the state level. So we can just go by what we know the process is, and with that understanding, we would expect it to be by late spring.
Right. And because all of the districts are in the exact same position, you may or may not have this answer, but based on the timeline that we have in place right now, should all things considered move forward, we can go with a public hearing on May 24th, order textbooks on the next day. Do we believe we can get textbooks in a three-month time? I mean, we know there's an issue with paper, we know there's an issue with all kinds of things right now. Do we have indications from the publishers that they do believe that they could get them to us in a timely fashion, or you may not have that answer?
Well, I wouldn't have that direct answer, but we do work. Marion County Public Schools will be placing their orders through Florida Book Depository, which is the state depository. And I do know that the book depository is already working with these publishers. So once our adoption is further along, we do start providing preliminary numbers to Florida Book Depository so that they can begin placing orders to be housed at the depository so that when we are at that point that we're able to say, go, this is our order, they were already prepared with what it was that Marion County Public Schools was going to need. And that's basically the way that all of the districts around the state will be operating. In comparison to where we were last year, so you can compare because we were in the same situation last year, our timeline this year, we're off just by two weeks. We were a little bit further along last year than where we are this year. So we did have just about, all student materials were here. We had the core teacher units for elementary and secondary in the hands of teachers at this point in time. The only things that were a little bit delayed in getting to us were the ancillary materials for the elementary ELA series, but we did get those out as soon as those materials came in. My department handled the processing of those materials because we knew school was going to be underway, and that was not something we wanted to be having, have additional expectations on our schools. So once those materials landed in our schools, they were ready to be distributed to our teachers and ready to go. So I expect us to be basically in that same situation for this coming year with the understanding that usually the math adoption does not have as many components as the ELA adoption has. So it should be much quicker to be able to process the number of materials that will be coming in.
And thank you, thank you, Ms. Leeds. Ms. Campbell asked an excellent question because I think we all have that same concern that we would be able to order in time and have them back here before the first day of school. And because we know there are some supply chain issues as well, and we kind of heard that statewide a couple of weeks ago over in Tallahassee. Ms. Thor.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Leeds. I think I know the answer to this question, but I think it's important for the community to know it too. All of the textbooks that are being recommended for adoption are aligned with the new Florida State standards?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the members of the District Evaluation Committee that began the initial evaluation process, the curriculum and instruction members were all members that had received training on the new Florida best standards. So those were the first eyes within Marion County that laid eyes on the materials that came in for that evaluation process. And then when it moved on into the adoption process with the committee review, we did take into consideration in the application process teachers that had participated in the beginning trainings for the new math best standards and what their extent of their knowledge was moving into the new best standards so that we knew those members had knowledge of the new best standards as they were reviewing these materials.
I see, and it's obviously really important for our kids to have textbooks when school starts. But my question is, what about any professional development that the teachers are going to need through the summer to really be ready with these books?
Correct. So when we get a little bit further along in our process, we are at a point that we would be able to start making those arrangements with publishers to secure dates. Again, this is a statewide K-12 adoption. So all of these publishers are going to be required to be providing supports across the state depending on which publishers each district is selecting. So as soon as we are at a point that we can make that, secure those dates with those publishers, we are already putting that temporarily on our calendars here so that when I'm at that go point, I can secure those dates with publishers. The intent is to be able to begin having some trainings at the very beginning of the summer and then again at the end of the summer when teachers are just about to come back to school.
Thank you, and I would hope that any textbook that we select from the state-approved list is going to be well-aligned because we've been down this trail before with going our own way and not using, you know, using a different reading curriculum for elementary. And, you know, that presented its own issues. So now we're aligning with the state as best we can in the theory that that's going to help kids learn and get where they need to be. So that's just a comment. My second comment is, Ms. Leeds, you are amazing. And your knowledge is so deep and so expansive. And I just wanted to thank you for doing what you do. This is such a complicated and intense and fast process, especially this year. And so my hat is off to you. Thank you.
Ms. Kim?
I agree with Ms. Thor. You are doing an excellent job and doing your due diligence as you always have. And I appreciate that you're working with a moving target and you're trying to even get ahead of that so that the students will have those books in there, hopefully, on the first day that they begin school. You said that during your presentation, and that is so important. You also mentioned next year is social studies. My question for you is K through five included in that for social studies next year?
Yes, ma'am. The state's adoption cycle for next year is scheduled for K through 12 social studies. And now that Marion County Public Schools is following the state adoption process, we will be looking at adoption for K through 12 social studies.
Okay, that's good, because I know that it's been many, many, many years since that's been touched. So that kind of resonated with me. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Leeds. Always truly a good job, great job. Please let your staff know and people that work with you, but also the volunteers and the people that we appointed to this committee to make this all happen. It was a lot to go over, and you guys gave us a good turnaround on it in a short time. So listen, I'm going to say this now. We know social studies is coming up this year, so we need some folk that if they are interested, to please reach out to us, individual board members, if you're interested, and reach out to Ms. Leeds as well. We'd rather have a lot of people ready to go than too few people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? There being none, we're moving forward. Mr. Dennis McFadden, Safe Schools Guardian Program.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell to each of you. Thank you for allowing me to come in and speak to you about the Guardian Program. Several, actually, we've had the program in place now for several years. And today, we're coming to see if we can get consensus to move forward with a letter to be sent out to selected employees that will be able to participate in the Guardian Program. This selected group of employees will receive this letter in an email form. We will then take the opportunity to vet each and every one of them at the district level to make sure that they meet our vetting process and the standards that we will need for them to be able to become guardians. And then at that point, we will send their names, or they will fill out an application, actually, to the Marion County Sheriff's Office, who is responsible by state statute to provide them with the minimum of 132 hours of training along with some other requirements. To just give you a kind of a broad overview of the Aaron Fies Guardian Program, Chapter 1006.2 in the Florida State Statute requires that every public school has a safe school officers at, on every campus. So if you look at it sort of like a drop-down box, safe school officers is comprised of four options that the school districts have. We, as a district, use the school resource officers to fulfill that requirement. Some districts use safety, school safety officers, which is comprised of their own sworn law enforcement officers within their district. And then we have the Aaron Fies Guardian Program, which we also have some of those throughout our school campuses. With these school guardians, they are not open carry. They are concealed carry on campuses. And they work, again, they go through this training with the Marion County Sheriff's Office. We have a list of names of them. They are, again, kept to the, sort of private to where only a select few district employees know who they are. And today, this letter is what we want to send out on February, I got the date February 18 of 2022, to those selected employees. Again, this is voluntary, it is a voluntary position. And with, the reason we brought it back to the board is because as we discussed it and met with the unions and different people within the district to go through the process, we may have to provide stipends to some of those individuals who choose to become guardians. And that stipend, we determine to be roughly $3,600. This is a one-time stipend, it's not something that would happen every year that's paid for by the district for those employees who may work after hours because some of the training may be required to be done after hours or on the weekend or maybe a Saturday. So the letter provides great detail as to how we're going to go through the process, what the requirements are for each guardian. And at that point, like I say, we'll vet them and send the information over to the Marion County Sheriff's Office. They'll go through this training, and we will be able to add more guardians to our schools. Right now, the Sheriff's Office can only do about 15 guardians a year through their training process. And keep in mind that a lot of those guardians, we have to provide an opportunity for our charter schools to have guardians as well since they don't have the, usually, they don't have the funding to pay for the SRO, so they go the route of a guardian.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. I know we've been talking about this for years now in making sure that we have guardians on campus. And thank you for continuing to push that we get some guardians. You said there's only 15 spots for this year's training?
Yes, based on the amount of availability at the range, it's usually only about 15 positions available to us. Keep in mind that the Sheriff's Office also do their training, all of their corrections officers, law enforcement officers, you got other state agencies from around the county that uses the one range. So we're very limited, and we can only do it from a time span around June, mid-June to-
August.
Before August, right before August, before the first week of school. So we got a very small window of opportunity that we have to use, we can use to take advantage of the program.
And we've already identified the job classifications that are eligible for this?
Yes, we've already identified them, working with our employment services. We've got those employees identified, and when we send out the email, only they will receive the email to be able to participate.
Good. Any questions? Ms. Brown?
Yes, thank you. I'm really in favor of this program and was when it originally came out. Isn't there some way, when I, when I, when I went through the, the, the training, isn't there some way to, we've got, I'm sure we've got military folks, and if you've had military training, you know, you're way past a whole bunch of this. Is there a, statutorily, do we have some room? And if we do, to expand this, if we do, could we expand availability of various ranges so that we could get this accomplished and not be constricted? Because I can just see this as a huge advantage from external threats that pop up, you know, just have popped up over the decades. So I would like, I would like it to be expanded, doubled, tripled the number you've brought forward and the military side of it. You know, maybe, maybe with some years, but I guarantee you, it's, it, you know, these people are competent with a firearm. So do you have any thoughts in that? a firearm. So do you have any thoughts in that regard? Have you, I'm sure you've gone down that path a little bit, but I'm just not real, real tolerant of anything that would, that would slow up this beautiful opportunity to safeguard our schools.
So as it relates to the Guardian Program, there are strict state requirements, and they have to follow the guidelines of the state. So if it's a Guardian, they have no other choice but to go through this process, which is the training is presented to us by the Marion County Sheriff's Office. And based on their availability and how they can do the training, we have to follow their guidelines as far as when we can do the training. The other thing you have to think about from a school standpoint, this training is roughly four to five weeks long, so it would be very hard, very difficult for us to train any other time during the school, during the school year, because a lot of these selected employees will be, they'll be working, they'll be doing the school time. It'll be when school is in. So we try to get it done during the summer. And again, the Marion County Sheriff's Office, as they're doing their training, their training may be done in times that conflict when we want to do it. So that's why we have to do it during the summer. And the timeline of when we're doing it is based on their availability.
Well, I would just say, open the, open the door as, and you can ask us, we, or, you know, we have great access to the governor, to the legislature, to the state. I mean, and it doesn't have to be, you know, this year. Anything that's a restriction that compromises safety, you know, we, that's what we have those legislators for, and that's what we've got the governor for. So I wouldn't, I would not, I would not be at all concerned about state issues, state requirements, because if they're, if they're hampering our ability to move, you know, we've got people up there ready and willing to make adjustments.
So we'll, just for the record, we do have an SRO on every single campus. So that in itself, we have the necessary security and safety measures in place to deal with an armed threat on campus. Obviously, the goal is to have more than one, in this particular case, the Guardian Program. But we have, in most cases, exceeded the state mandate that's required of us to have a safe, a safe school officer on campus by doubling up at our high schools, having Guardians at those, at some of these different schools around the county. So we, in a lot of cases, more than exceeded what the minimum requirement was or is. And in this case here, we're just adding additional.
Right. And I'm very much in favor of that. I think in that case that we had down south, it was that SRO that was, that was not up to speed. In other words, it's always good to be safe rather than sorry. And that's my comment. To the extent you can do that, you know, at least for this board member, let me know if you've got, if you've got anything that's hampering us on a state level, because this board has got great access to every level within state government. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? All right. So he's looking for consensus from us to send this letter. Do you have my recommendation, Mr. McFadden?
All right. So with your consensus, I'll, we'll go back to my office, meet with Ms. Dobbins, my secretary. We'll make sure that everything is in here, what needs to be in here, which it already is. And we'll send it out tomorrow, and they'll have about a two-week period to get information back to us. We'll start vetting as soon as our names start coming through, and we'll get those names sent out and pushed out to the Sheriff's Office as soon as possible.
And let me ask this question without, has our past efforts to get Guardians, has it been lucrative?
In the past, we have, at one point, I was looking at 100 and some names of people, potential Guardians. But again, due to the strain that it may put on certain positions within the school system, they chose not to pursue it because the responsibility of educating kids to them came first. And like I said, we do have SROs on every campus. So their responsibility to making sure kids are educated kind of took a priority, and a lot of them backed away from it just for that purpose, because they realized that they had a bigger role in their eyes to educate kids rather than taking the four or five weeks off during the summer to try to do this program.
And for clarity, and for clarity, the Guardian is in addition to our SRO program?
Yes, it's in addition to the SRO program. The SROs are there on the campus, and these are just in addition to the SROs.
Thank you. God, you guys are good with them going forward with the letter. All right, Ms. McFadden?
Thank you all.
Any public comment? There being none, moving forward. Board comments and concern? Ms. Prespatino?
Thank you.
Ms. Talbot Irving. Thank you for sitting in, Ms. Talbot Irving. She's sitting in for the superintendent, and she likes, likes it to be fast. So she don't have to say too much. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items. I am rescinding a previous request for an attorney-client session regarding case Scott Frank versus School Board of Marion County that was scheduled for Ms. Green, Attorney Green. I am resetting that for 3-3 would be what I would prefer. I also have a second one to do as well. So as to the first one, I'm notifying you, board members, that Attorney Suzanne Green, or her designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm, has informed me that a vice is needed regarding case number 2016-1770CA, styled Scott Frank versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida, pursuant to 286.011 Florida statutes, Sunshine Law. On behalf of Attorney Green, I'm requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation or compromise of said claim. I've asked the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It suggested the attorney-client session be held at 11:00 a.m. during a recess of the March 3, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session scheduled, or as soon thereafter as may be heard. As required by statute, only the following individuals will be present: Eric Cummings, Board Chair; Allison Campbell, Vice Chair; Nancy Thorer, School Board Member; Don Browning, School Board Member; Kelly King, School Board Member; Superintendent Diane Gullett; Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney; and Suzanne Green, Esquire or Designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm. I've asked a court reporter to record this session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section 286.011 Florida statutes, discuss a pending claim. If there are no objections, the attorney-client session should occur during a recess of the March 3, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session starting at 11:00 a.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard. Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir. If I may have just a moment. I need to get a case number. Oh, here we go. I got it. As to the second session, I do need to go through the same things again to comply with Florida statute. Notifying you that Attorney Suzanne Green, or Designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm, has informed me that a vice is needed regarding case number 20-CA-0606, styled Jennifer Yarnell versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Again, pursuant to 286.011, the Sunshine Law, on behalf of Attorney Green, I am requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation or compromise of said claim. I've asked the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending it to be published. It suggested that attorney-client session be held at 11:00 a.m. during a recess of the March 3, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session scheduled, or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Again, as required by statute, only the following individuals will be present: Eric Cummings, Board Chair; Allison Campbell, Vice Chair; Nancy Thorer, School Board Member; Don Browning, School Board Member; Kelly King, School Board Member; Superintendent Diane Gullett; Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney; and Suzanne Green, Esquire or the Designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm. I have also asked a court reporter to record this session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section 286.011 Florida statutes, discuss a pending claim. If there are no objections, the attorney-client session should occur during a recess of the March 3, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session starting at 11:00 a.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard. Anything else, Attorney Powers?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Brennan, we're going to start with you today.
Okay, with comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Chair. Well, we've had a pretty, pretty wonderful discussion on several issues, and that, that, that just really heartens this school, the school board member. I'm a big believer in, in open transparency, and it kind of leads me to this, I really want to comment as to how happy I am with progress on briefings, workshops, and board meetings as it relates to this consent agenda idea that's been coming up quite often. And I would like to see, it just seems like it's a huge benefit to everybody, starting with the community, through the board. Board seems to have embraced it beautifully. And it is a difference. It's a change, no question about it. But I'd like to see some kind of a list of criteria, and perhaps 100,000, it sounds a little bit big for me, but if something is revenue, expense, and for me, $10,000 is a lot of money. But I would like to see some of these can be brought through in three minutes. We did some timing on them last, last session. They can move through fast. And, and when, once people begin to see the total scope, whether it's 100,000, it's 40, 50,000, that type of thing, once they see the total scope, and then they can see and hear comments, I think it goes a long way toward us linking to, actually doing the kind of marketing we're talking about to the community in terms of selling the services and the, the inner workings, if you will. Because if it comes in front of the board, it's, it's just a, for me, it's a really big deal. It's why we're here. So I would like to see a criteria built for the consent agenda so that people can understand where it is, what it is, and how it's being used. And if I have support on that concept, it'll make this board member a much happier guy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. Ms. Thoreau?
Yes, I don't have anything else today regarding our work session. I feel like we, as usual, you know, went deep, got a lot of great information, and so that's all I have on that. Regarding the continued conversation about the consent agenda, there isn't any board member sitting here that isn't all about transparency. Some may call it fluff, but our commitment statement, that's why we read it. We are committed to transparency. And as far as evidence and metrics of that are concerned, this actual work session was not televised before we were elected to the school board. And that is something that has been a huge benefit for transparency. You just have to ask for a CD for the meeting and wait a while to get it. So now it's on YouTube and accessible anytime. Another element of the transparency is actually getting out to our schools and really communicating with the folks that are doing the heavy lifting. And that goes a long way to helping us make the types of informed decisions that we've been elected to make. Personally, I take my election to the Marion County School Board very seriously. The public has put their trust in me to know what I'm doing and to do my research and to represent them in a way where they feel confident that the decisions that I make are going to be in the best interest of the kids, family, and community that we're elected to serve. I'll also say that the consent agenda format itself, there are areas where it can be improved. And that's something I've been working on a little bit. Just as an example, when I was elected to the school board, I wondered what that C slash D, you know, really, really meant. And I deducted that it was, you know, consent slash discussion, because it's either going to be a consent item, or it's going to get pulled for discussion, one or the other. But a suggestion that I had made was, let's go ahead and say, put consent agenda at the top of all of the items, kind of like the title of a book, you know, and then you know. So there's certain tweaks like that that I think are really important to do in the name of transparency. And I would say that, again, there isn't anyone sitting on this board that isn't committed to coming up with ways for our community to be able to access and understand what it is we've been charged with actually doing. I am concerned about the fact that the school board agenda is released at 1:00 p.m. on the Tuesday prior, I think it is. Am I saying that right, Ms. Prespatino? We get the school board agenda seven days in advance, the school board members do.
Yes, ma'am. And we usually try to publish it by noon, but sometimes just making sure everything's correct, and it takes a little bit longer. But we do shoot for a noon deadline most of the time.
Okay, okay. I thought so. And I think by statute, it has to be a full seven days.
Yes, ma'am.
And when it's released to us, it's also released on our website, right? So the public can see it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's important because we have to remember that our schedules as school board members are very different than our employees' schedules. And if it's something, for example, like, why isn't there a dollar sign in front of a, of a item with a cost associated with it, even though there's decimal points there, and it's sort of implied, that to me is something that any of us as board members can call the main office, the main school board number, and it's on the agenda what staff members has that item. So for example, Rick Collins, you know, if it's his item, or if it's your item, or Dr. Gullett's item. So any of us can call that main number and say, I'd like to speak with, you know, Mr. Collins, because I have a question about the bid process. And get that answered ahead of time. And really save the items that are critical, important to each of us as board members, save those for the ones that get pulled. And maybe we could just make a gentleman's and gentleman's agreement while we're talking about this, for each of us to commit ourselves, when that agenda is released a week ahead of time, commit ourselves to reviewing it as soon as possible and ask our questions. Because the implication of not doing that means that we have employees that we say we honor and we thank and that are critical to our mission, that are getting going at 5:30, 6:00 a.m. in the morning, getting their own children to school, working all day, and then coming here at a school board meeting because they have to, because that agenda item is theirs and they're the expert on it, to sit with us from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 or 9:00 p.m. And if you count the number of hours, I think we just need to be mindful of that and respectful of that as board members. And make sure that what we're going to bring forth And make sure that what we're gonna bring forward to the public are the questions that really can't be answered or shouldn't be answered any other way. And remember now, we also have our comment time as board members, like I'm doing right now, to say, hey, I had a question because it seems stupid to me that a dollar sign is not being indicated, but when I talked to Rick Collins, I learned that that's actually a software issue and and maybe that will be able to be rectified with the software platform that we have, or maybe it's a four hundred thousand dollar investment to change that and we don't wanna do that right now. So so that's where I am um with the consent agenda um conversation. I am all about the transparency. I am all about improving our practice. I am all about reducing the acronyms so that the layman can understand our business and and why we're doing it, but I will never lose sight of the fact that the public has put their trust in me to do my job and I'm gonna do it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Ms. King?
Thank you. Uh I am gonna bring up a concern today and it's been lingering around for a couple of years and um it just seems to be progressing. And my concern is discipline. And unfortunately, we live in a time where our students seem to be getting in altercations more so now probably than ever. And in not all cases, but in some cases, sometimes there are innocent students that are defending and protecting themselves. And when they defend and protect themselves, they are also getting the same discipline that the perpetrator could uh also be receiving. And I take issue with that. Under no circumstances should a student ever be plummeted, hit, bullied, anything like that, whether it be on a school bus, in a cafeteria, in their classroom, anywhere, at any point should a student have to tolerate that. And I know I brought it up a couple of years ago. I promised them that I would bring light to it. I thought I did bring light to it and it has escalated. So I would like to bring that back around again. I think the code of conduct needs to be looked at, it seriously needs to be addressed and that needs to be taken in consideration because it, again, I'm gonna say it, at no point should anyone just lay down and take a beating. And I'll just leave it at that. And there's my last famous words. I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. King. Thank you.
You're absolutely on target. Absolutely.
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, um to that point, our students' coping mechanisms are are not where they need to be at all right now. We're seeing lots of increases across, across the board. Here, here. Other than that, we've covered a lot of topics today and I've pretty much covered all the things I was gonna say earlier on that was dealing specific with community engagement and increasing that engagement among our business partners, our parents, our faith-based community, everybody that we can. We need support and we need help. And and our teachers and our administrators and those working in our schools are tired and they are valued beyond what we could ever say from here. And we know that the work that they're doing is so vitally important, but we've reached a tipping point that we can't do it alone is is how I see it. And so I'll continue to to harp on this bandwagon, I guess you could say, for additional community support, however we can make that look moving forward. And beyond that, uh y'all have a good long weekend because we kinda do have a long weekend.
Oh, that's right. Just a few things and and we'll, we'll close out. Thank all of you guys for serving. I think sometimes people think that we just serve one district. We serve the whole district. We're elected to represent a district, but we serve the whole county as a whole. And um anyone in the county has access to any of us. So please reach out to any of us. Of course, sometimes we may refer you back to the person that represents your district. However, you have access to all of us because we're pretty much um an at-large uh county where we were elected. So please, and I, and I, I want to commend all of my board members because I I know that you guys um take the same things seriously as as serious as I do when it comes to student success, when it comes to our staff, when it comes to our relations in the community and making sure that um our district is improving and not going backwards. We heard a lot of data today, um some good, some not so good, some, some light, some not so light. There's room for a lot of improvement and I think we, our superintendent has created a team of people that are gonna help move us to the right places. We need the data, we need to look at the data, we need to analyze the data. And I said it earlier, we need to take the data and come up with great um solutions for um our students. I, Ms. Ms. Thor brought up, and Mr. Brown brought up about um the consent agenda and and taking the time to go through our agenda and look at it prior to getting here and making sure that we um we are um good stewards of everyone's time, good stewards of everyone's time because it 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 is painful to see us here to nine or ten o'clock at night knowing that some of our staff members have to travel, uh don't live in this county, have to travel a couple counties away at night and have to be back here the next morning and continue to do the work that um we've entrusted them to do as um professionals. So I do, I want to value and honor everyone's time and honor our staff in this whole process. The the thing that that kept coming out to me today was, um and Ms. King said it, um building, building relationships, building relationships. And we as board members, um as the, the visible um leadership group of this, this organization, this district have to build those relationships and they start going from top down and then back up again. And um I want us to make sure that we're building the right relationships that go through the district but out into the community so the community feel comfortable enough reaching out to the schools, reaching out to whomever. One of the things that I always try to do is when folk reach out to me, it's not my job to just um try to take, take the bull and run with it. It's, it's, it's my job to try to put them in contact with the people that they need to talk to first and and help them to deal with that situation. And oftentimes I'll refer them back to the schools because if they jump straight from their incident to me, that means you did not give the person at that school the opportunity to resolve that situation or the person in the, in that specific department the opportunity to resolve that situation. And for whatever reason you felt that you had to jump to me, I need to make sure that when you get to me, that you've done everything you need to do to get to me. Not that I'm absolving any of my duty, I just wanna make sure that we build those relationships. And that's one way that we build relationships and 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 doing follow-up and doing the follow-up behind those things. I appreciate that. Ms. King, you hit it on the head again with the discipline issue. I have been talking with Ms. Tabarder, with the superintendent, with Mr. Frazier, Ms. Livinggood, all the parties involved about um our discipline issue. And the only way that we're gonna tackle that discipline issue is um we have to build better relationships, once again, and we have to look at our code of conduct. There is some issues, I think, with our code of conduct. There is a review coming up of the code of conduct on the twenty-third of this month. And I did reach out to the superintendent and to Ms. Livinggood and state that, we know, we, we don't need to just deal with surface stuff, we don't need to just scratch the surface on things, we need to really deal with the issues with our student conduct and make sure that it is equitable. I I agree wholeheartedly. No kid should have to take a beating and then get expelled too and say that it was a two-on, it was a one-on-one fight. No, that was a beating. That was someone getting beaten and being punished and and but there's language that's in our code of conduct that prohibits that and that's not fair. So we need to make it equitable, we need to make it right and we need to do what we have to do to correct that code of conduct and make sure that it um is representative of of what we intended for it to do. We have a lot of expulsions, we have a lot of disciplinary issues, we have a lot of things going on. I'm, I'm gonna be looking at some more data because I'm wondering, um one of my questions is, when, once you expel people, what's the success rate? What's the success rate of them being expelled, going to an alternative placement, and then ever getting back into school and graduating? I'm con, I'm concerned about that because I know that the rate is very low. So what, are there other things before it gets to expulsions? Progressive discipline and different things of the such. So we have some real tough conversations to have to have about um discipline and staff understand, we wanna support our staff completely when it comes to discipline. We wanna make sure that um they're supported, but every child in that classroom, every child in that school has to also be supported as well as the parents. So we wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing in our student code of conduct. Thank you for reminding us about the long weekend. Thank you for reminding us about the long weekend. I think we probably need it. I think we all probably need it. And and I'm gonna close on a positive note. One thing I I notice is that um there's a certain type of feeling that you have when you're able to to help people get up, when you're help, when you're able to help people succeed, where you're able to help um others achieve their dreams. I want to commend Brittany Bow and Aaron Jackson, two O'Callens from, two O'Callens. Brittany Bow qualified for a race that Aaron Jackson did not qualify for, but yet she was able to pick up her teammate and her teammate was able to get across the finish line and get gold. Last night Brittany was able to get her medal too as well. So whenever you lift someone else's, someone else up, it does not mean that you're lessening yourself to lift someone else up. It's our job as a district to lift people up. It's our job to lift these students up. We saw some heavy stuff today. So it's not about pointing the finger at anybody or anything like that. You said that so well today, Ms. Ms. Campbell. It's not about creating adversaries, it's about the, the tough job of lifting folk up. And as a district, that's what our goal has to be to start lifting these people up, lifting our students up, our parents, our teachers, our staff. And I believe that when we lift them up the right way, everybody can get a medal. Everybody will get a medal and we'll all get across the finish line. So I, I know that sounded a little like a commentary, but that was just my thoughts that I've been sitting here thinking about all day. And uh and and I just, I, I, I just feel, I'm excited about the things where we are because I feel like we're, we're at the verge of something great coming out of this district. But I want us to all be on the, on the same page where we're not putting people down, we're lifting them up. And sometimes it comes off that we're lit, we're putting people down when we really need to be making sure that we're, we're pushing them up. With that being said, I don't have any more comments. I'm all tuckered out and I'm looking forward to the, to the long weekend. So let's head for the mountains. Meeting adjourned.
Perhaps shall I suggest a round of applause for our Olympians?
Oh, please, let's, yes, I wanna commend both of our Olympians.
Well, Joey Mantilla is from Ocala too, so.
And our Olympians, yes, so we will give them a standing ovation. I saw on the, um, I saw on the marquee out here where they were congratulating them. I'm hoping that when they come home and they'll be able to drive around the county and see where we're all congratulating them.
Ticket take rate.
Yes, I'm looking for a ticket take rate. With that being a certain, um, with that being said, meeting is adjourned at one oh five.